Today it's like the people agreed for hours and dropping off some of the supplies like the
Gotcha.
I thought. Like Kleenex and stuff, yeah. And and the high school started back watching.
Yeah.
So. We're called for order at six thirty. Uh, Virginia did contact me earlier today as well in the issue of last uh meeting. So we will uh proceed. And we'll secretary to say you're welcome.
Trusty, capital, working here, trustee pause.
Here.
Trustee group.
Here.
Trustee, I'm going here, trustee Rogers here, and trustee Verax is here.
The hall. Uh, next item is the approval of minutes from our July meetings. Of uh July twenty fifth. Are there any comments, questions, or corrections to those minutes in the back there? During that, is there emotional improvements? So moved by Ted, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Suzanne, all of us, is there any further discussion during that, those of David Sayad? Those opposed same day and the extensions they are approved. Uh, next item is public comments. Uh, I did not receive any comments in writing prior to the meeting uh or Jocelyn or through the form. The uh, those who have signed in uh hall. Right here.
Yes, please.
Thank you. Good evening. Glad to see the library back in business today. So this evening, I'm speaking at this meeting to urge the Old Park Public Library to reevaluate its approach to today's significant social issues. The first example is regards to the anti-racism strategic priority of the library. Racism is definitely an anatomy and we should work to oppose it. However, I feel it'd be more helpful for the library to find not just what it opposes, but also what it supports. The second example takes me back to last summer when the Supreme Court issued its Dobbs versus Jackson decision. I noticed a page on the library's website with abortion resources. I didn't notice anything to help women in difficult or unexpected pregnancy situations carry their babies to term, like the organization Aid for Women. Everything was about just helping women get an abortion. And I was furthermore concerned about a link to a database of big clinics which unfairly targets pregnancy resource centers that do so much good work to help women and face backlash simply because they don't promote abortion. The third example I'm concerned about is the library's support of a book sanctuary resolution known as PAR. I acknowledge that certain voices in our society have been silenced for years and it's important to work and to ensure that these voices have a place in our society, including the library's collection, and to oppose the tactics of extremist groups that are in societies that are trying to oppose the work of libraries. However, some of these resources, especially those supporting the LGBTQ community, have content that some parents find objectionable to their children and in their mind makes the library an unsafe place for their families. And my concern is that this book sanctuary resolution sets up a confrontational stance that doesn't validate legitimate concerns of parents, instead attempting to silence them and even equating them with extremists without doing anything to facilitate meaningful dialogue with these concerns. For example, I noticed this book on display back in June, which granted may help some children who are confused about their gender identity, but may very well also sow confusion in children who are perfectly content with their birth gender. And I feel like at this point, the pendulum is almost swinging too far to the other extreme in an effort to support the LGBTQ community. Given these examples I have shared, I call upon this library to take a more balanced approach in ensuring all voices are heard without silencing those that don't align with a particular agenda. That would truly help build our community. And I'm confident the library can do this because I know that this institution has done much to edify me as an individual. In fact, twenty years ago this summer, I started serving as a teen volunteer, which gave me a chance to give back to my community. And I'm immensely grateful for that opportunity. And I hope the library will continue supporting efforts to help people contribute. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Uh, Warren.
Hello, good morning. My name is Rory O'Neill. Um, my purpose for speaking to you tonight is to, once again, attempt to convince everyone here to terminate the contract without the building maintenance services. Our library's cleaning contract at one hundred and eighty thousand, seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars is by far the biggest service contract that this library has. In the past and on multiple occasions, I've outlined to you why this termination should take place. Tonight, I offer one more reason for doing that. In July, I made a Freedom of Information Act request to obtain invoices for floor servicing supplies. The total cost of those invoices was eleven thousand, six hundred and thirty-two dollars and sixty-three cents. Those invoices represent purchases made from June of twenty twenty-two through November of twenty twenty-two. Recently, I made a FOIA request to obtain, quote, "documents of reimbursement," unquote, by Alpha Building Maintenance Services for the exact same supplies. Please note the word reimbursement. The answer to that request was, quote, "The library has no records responsive to the parameters of your second request. The library does not purchase any unspecified materials from Alpha Building Maintenance Services." Ladies and gentlemen, the library's contract with Alpha clearly states that the contractor provides all equipment and supplies necessary that is stated three separate times throughout the contractor. My question, why is the taxpayer picking up the cost of these supplies when it is in direct contradiction to the terms of the contract? This brings the total cost of that contract to be one hundred ninety-two thousand, four hundred dollars and sixty-three cents. Alpha signed that contract knowing full well they were responsible for the cost of all the supplies. I know this because I was there. It was my job to enforce the terms of the contract. Again, I ask, why is the taxpayer picking up the cost of those supplies? This contract ends in three days. I ask that all of you see to it that the contract is terminated. That's all I got to say on that matter. It came to my attention this morning that someone very close to me and near dear me, a union brother of mine who was injured here at the library today. Um, this is our first time, everybody's first time having a union here at the library, okay? I would advise administrators not to do anything careless, okay? Let's all just keep our heads. Thank you for hearing me out, folks. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Moving on to trustee comments and calendar.
I guess it's I want to say it's gonna be like a hard beginning of this meeting considering what I just heard is um damaging. I know I'm not the only one who feels that way, so um in regards to the anti-racism, the LGBT supports, the abortion support. I guess I just want to acknowledge our library is doing an amazing job and um supporting those that are most vulnerable. And yeah, I'm just, I'm a little shook, so I'm gonna admit that.
Particularly after the actions of this, that the, what has unfolded this week. It's a little unsettling. I have to say that I was concerned about what was in the bag. So. Yeah.
Yeah. As I, you know, I had sent out an email to the staff um y- yesterday, and I think I would just like to say it again that this, the last forty-eight hours, I, I can't imagine how disruptive it has been, how um troubling it has been, you know, regardless of this person's motivations, regardless of you know, the fact that nothing was found, it is a, is a troubling act and that I don't think any of us thought whatever, something we would have to deal with, you know, in, in our lives and in our professions when we, when any of you started your careers working in public libraries and, you know, when I, unlike, you know, I, even when I just most recently ran this, it was not something I thought I was ever going to have to face uh here, that kind of threat. Um, but the way in which staff has shown up uh today, the way staff responded and coordinated with the village and the police department to ensure the safety of our buildings is commendable and I want to thank everyone for it. I, you know, I, I think I can safely speak for everyone here at the board table that your safety is one of the top priorities on, in our, in our minds as we approach how we operate and make decisions as a board. And we will continue to do everything we can to make sure that you have the support and resources you need to do the jobs safely and to the level of excellence that we have always known you are capable of doing. Um, and that, you know, and, and Jocelyn and, you know, your coordination with the village and I know you encountered some initial resistance um but you per, you know, your, you know, your, your uh persistence and prioritization of our needs uh helped to make sure that all of our staff had a safe place for them to work today. I thank you for that.
And I thank you all for your support too, um, as a board, and then you appreciate it. So I just wanna just move back to that as well and say thank you for everyone that came today too, instead of seeing our people back in the library and the work continues.
Okay.
You know, he's trying to say, and when you said about appreciation for our staff, he also connected back to um what we heard in terms of public comments regarding the I, I guess our collections most broadly and I just, and our policies and I just think that I, I don't think I've been prouder to belong to anything as much as I'm proud, as proud to belong to the, to the library. Well, it's not bad.
Depend on the day, depend on the day.
Move on to the executive director's report.
Okay, thank you. All right, so uh, you have my report there. I, I'm gonna save a lot of time to, now we have Mallory here with us um to give us a six-month review and I think it's a great time for her to um walk with us and what we have been doing in terms, um, you get the core statistics every month, but there's like a little bit of story behind that too. And she's gonna present this to us today and just really briefly, my report, just really brief highlights, um. I, I did attend Director's University uh that has been really helpful and I, I hope you see that reflected in the months coming up in the things that I learned uh in terms of uh what I need to know to do my job in, in terms of following policies, procedures, laws, that sort of thing. So I'm excited about that. It was a sudden to be accepted for the opportunity. Um, in Springfield for three days, that was great. Um, I was also asked to be a presenter speaking of civil engagements because of what we do and the work that we do here. Um, it's recognized nationally, so the Urban Libraries Council asked uh me and a colleague from Iberly Washington State to talk about how we engage our community in civil engagement. And the primary example that I talked about was when we have candidate forms and how we um connect with the legal women voters, which is a wonderful partnership. Uh, thank you for that. I appreciate the staff that worked with us on that as well to put that together, because and from what I heard from the responses, every library can have that opportunity. And sometimes people stop them just that when you say the women voters, that's a, that's a non-starter. So and again, it's um wonderful that we are able to be an example for the nation in terms of providing access to information because knowledge is power. And I think that's where sometimes you, you know, you get the pushback, because people don't want you to have that. Um, but, you know, again, with your support and just with the culture that we have here, we always want to present people with all the information. Uh, so I was, I was proud to be able to present that and we had good feedback. We had over two hundred people from across the country participate in that um in that webinar. Um, and then I'll just leave it at that. You see, you see the rest of the things. I don't want to take up a lot of time because of our budget to discuss tonight too. Um, we have good news uh that Rob had. I don't, I didn't make it in here, but were we gonna add it on the next one or were we gonna put it in here? Did you want to speak about your words?
I can speak about it, yes.
Because you please.
It should have made it in.
Oh, I don't, I don't see it.
Okay.
We, we cannot include it because I'm from a question request regarding September fourteen.
Okay, alright.
Is it, so is it okay to share? Okay. Well, Rob has good news to share.
So my director's report didn't make it in.
Because of the time.
Gosh.
Put it in, so we should still say it.
Okay, cool. So uh, we actually received an award uh for our work with Northwestern, so it's uh, it's really, it's a research uh community and academic award. So uh, it's a tenth annual award with our, which is branch Northwestern. Um, I will share, you'll see there's a published uh research article that will be in the next um report for you all to see. Um, the award's a pretty big deal. We didn't expect to get it, but this is, we're going into our fifth year um next year, so of a five-year grant. And it's been great. Uh, we did a lot of stuff to listen to the community and again, we were being awarded and recognized for it. So I'm super psyched, team services and other staff that participated out there are too, so.
Do you want to talk a little bit more about the partnership and then for the record of specifically what it's about?
Oh, for sure. Yeah, so it's a digital um mental health app that we're building. Uh, the project is all about uh reaching out to marginalized populations um in the open part area. There's some, there's some kids from the west side that participated. Uh, they got stymies, things of that nature. So next year, um, we'll have an app through our digital resources for a mental health app to help kids, our team particularly manage anxiety. So it's one of the first of its kind in the library world that we're being awarded for. So it's nice for our library to be recognized.
Thank you, Har. Congratulations.
Yeah.
Okay, so with that, Valerie, you wanna go? The locals can talk into it. Okay.
Yeah. Alright, hello, everybody. Um, thanks for letting me join the meeting tonight and steal a little bit of time off the agenda just to go through um that comparison core stats report that Jocelyn mentioned. So again, my name's Mallory Edgar. I'm the data consultant for the library. I was uh previously on staff with the library as the manager of data analytics for about two and a half years before I transitioned to this consultant role in January twenty twenty-two. Um, so still doing the same types of things for the library, but just with a different relationship. Um, and one of the things that I do on a monthly basis for the library is I help with pulling together that um strategic priorities report and then the core stats dashboard, which as you all know is included in your packets each month. Um, and one thing that's new this month, um, that you'll notice, it comes in the packet right after the strategic priorities report um is a comparison core stats report. Um, so it's not just twenty twenty-three data, but it's showing you some historical data as well, so we can take a look at trends together. Um, so this report, like I said, it's on page fourteen. Um, it's the one that's like shades of teal with lots of charts on it. Um, and says core use statistics, January through June twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-three on it. Um, and this report might look familiar to some folks who are with the board in January of twenty twenty-one. We did a similar report um and that was included in the board packet that month um that looked at twenty twenty back through twenty fifteen as well for the ten core statistics that we were tracking at the time. Um, we're doing twelve stats now because we added uh meeting reviews and study reviews. Um, so just to, you know, I guess backing up the, you know, we, we planned to, in talking to Jocelyn, to do a report like this in January of twenty twenty-four, looking at the entire calendar year of twenty twenty-three and the, the couple of years prior. But then we're like, why wait until the end of the calendar year to do some sharing? You know, we're, we've got the first two quarters of the year complete. Let's take a look now and see, um, see what we're seeing. Um, so just to orient you a little bit to the report itself, um, right underneath the title, there is a little blurb that tells you what you're looking at. Um, so there are twelve total core stats. We're looking just at Q one through Q two data, um, and we're displaying it in a few different ways. So for each statistic, there is first a line graph that is showing you um per month average usage for that Q one through Q two time period, um, twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-three. So it gives you a sense of what uh monthly use or engagement has looked like each of those years. Underneath the line graphs, um, there are bar charts that instead of having uh the monthly averages, they are the cumulative totals for Q one through Q two each of those years. And then lastly, there are these two sort of rectangular scorecards that are in that percentage changes um section that are um showing you the percentage change in twenty twenty-three compared to two different points. So first comparing it to what we saw on average for that twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-two time period, so the two years prior. And then secondly, to um twenty nineteen, what we saw in Q one through Q two of that year, just as like a pre-pandemic reference point. And then at the very bottom of um the report in that little like light gray, well, not little, that red light gray box, um, there's data definitions, the sources that those come from, um, as well as any notes about like missing or incomplete data um that we may have. So that's there for your reference. Um, for example, like with the meeting room use and study room use, you'll see that there's only a twenty twenty-two comparison and that's because uh physical meeting rooms and study rooms were not available for public use during the first two quarters of twenty twenty-one due to the pandemic. So that's what you're looking at. I was gonna highlight then just kind of a few things that jumped out at me, but any questions about what's in the report before I do some of those highlights?
What is online resources?
Yeah, so online resources, um, at the bottom you'll see the definition there. That's the number of sessions or logins for online resources based on vendor statistics. So I'm blanking on some of the um specific, I wish Barbara were here um to be able to share some of that.
This would include probably.
Super forums, yeah, like online places, stuff like that, yeah. You can use your library card and your PIN to log into. So online resources excludes eBooks and digital audiobooks. We kind of talked about.
Digital resources.
It's a database and it's periodical.
Yeah.
And it's the count, how many card users or how many times it was, and like if that someone put in their PIN to get into an online.
Yeah, it's the number of logins. So, yeah.
So you could be like one person who twenty-four hours later did it again and again.
Yeah.
Totally.
Yeah. Thanks, Jerry. Great. Um, so there's probably different things that jump out at different folks as they're looking through this, but just some things that I wanted to highlight. Um, when you, when you just kind of skim through the report, just taking a glance at what the line graphs and the bar charts and those percentage change um stats look like, you can see that across the board, when we're looking at twenty twenty-three compared to the prior two years, we're seeing either upward trends or stability across all of the core stats. Um, and you can see that some of the percentage changes are um over a hundred percent, um, when you look at twenty twenty-three compared to the prior two years. Um, and you know, I think for some of the, the stats where we're seeing the biggest percentage change increases, it's not super surprising. And there's some of those like in library, in-person things, um, like wifi use, computer use, um, or uh program attendance, community outreach, things that we would kind of expect to see increases in over that time period as um patron behavior and library offerings changed and increased as we moved through different phases of, of the pandemic. Um, there are two stats that you can see that are in the middle. So if you look in the top row um in the center, website users, and then right underneath it, digital materials use um that have stayed pretty steady um over this three-year period. So you can see the line graphs uh pretty flat. The percentage change is about one percent in either direction, so um not anything significant by any means. Um, but then when you also look at that twenty nineteen comparison, you can see that we've had some real sustained increases over that twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-three period for some things like use of the website, like use of digital materials and like online resources. Um, so some of those things which, you know, I think are things that we expected obviously to, to increase in the early months, early years of the pandemic have really demonstrated a lot of staying power um across all of these years. So digital material use, um, it's continued to be essentially double, um, what we were seeing in twenty nineteen every year, twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-three. Um, online resource use, which is to the right of um digital material use, uh, that also has just like continued to climb. Um, and it's the one core statistic in this whole report that you can see um the percentage change value is over a hundred percent, whether you're comparing it to the last two years or comparing it to pre-pandemic. Um, and then new users have also um grown, whether you're comparing it again to the prior two, two-year average or um to twenty nineteen. So it was about twenty-five percent increase in um folks signing up for new user accounts when you compare it to the last two years and then about a ten percent increase even over what we were seeing in twenty nineteen. Um, and then unsurprisingly again, uh, with some of those in-person, in-building stats, um, even though we've seen, as you can see, increases um over this, these past three years, some of them are still lagging behind what we saw in twenty nineteen, just to varying degrees. Um, so program attendance, for example, and that one is toward the bottom, the second to last row over to the right. That one, we've seen a big um jump in twenty twenty-three relative to the prior two years. Um, about it's a hundred and seventy-four percent increase when you compare it to that average of the last two years. Um, and it's nearly closed the gap when you look at twenty nineteen. So it's only eight percent below what we were seeing in twenty nineteen. Uh, physical material use as well as meeting room use and study room use um are also not too far off from what we were seeing in twenty nineteen. They're about like twenty to twenty-five percent below that. Um, and then the places where we've like seen the biggest decreases when we're comparing to pre-pandemic um are wifi use and computer use, but you can also see when you look at those graphs that they're moving upward, that it's not like there's stagnation that's happening with any of those. It's just that where they're at right now relative to twenty nineteen is lower than what some of the other core stats are relative to twenty nineteen. Um, so those were some of the big things that jumped out at me that I wanted to go over. I know that was a lot of data and a lot of talking on my part, so folks might have other comments or questions. Um, I did want to say that, you know, I think it's gonna be interesting to see what the second half of twenty twenty-three looks like, what future years look like in terms of trends. Um, and I included the twenty nineteen um data in this because I think it's useful to see it not as a benchmark in the sense of a goal per se, but just to have a sense of what do things look like in the four times and what are they looking like now? And I know that something that's come up um in conversations that I've been a part of with LT members and I think it's come up with the board too, is this idea that um, you know, trying, planning to revert back to what things were pre-pandemic is, isn't necessarily the goal or even something that's realistic, right? For a lot of these things, some of the the patron use behaviors that we're seeing are, I think, are just representing some like sustained shifts in behavior that aren't good or bad, that they're just different. Um, but I think taking a look at these numbers on a regular basis and being able to look at it retrospectively too helps us to get a better sense of what do the shifts look like and, and maybe think about why. And that's it for me. I will stop talking and let folks ask questions or make comments.
I have a question about the meeting room use and study room use.
Yeah.
Because I know that we've, we've gone down like a sink in each of those. In terms of how many are available to the public um in that time. So I'm just wondering if that like is adjusted or if that's.
No, it's not yet. It's not adjusted by the the number that are in there. That's a good question, though. And I will say, if I'm remembering correctly, I think meeting reviews and study reviews, when those were made. Available in the public again, those are some of the things that they rebounded pretty quickly, like there was a good amount of usage pretty early on. Um, when we were looking at how things were changing as more services became available again to folks.
I'm just curious if there were trends that stuck out with regard to when. When those rooms tend to be used, like for example, if we're comparing Q one and Q two. And if like we see a huge jump in study rooms during the fall. Quarter when kids aren't coming back to school and they're getting, you know, used to to changes. So is. Two-three traditionally when we might see a big jump. And you don't have to have this memorized, but I'm just, you know, but that sort of minutia is is something that actually would. I'd be I'd be curious to know further for the next round.
Also say in Q two, we have all the increased use around finals.
That's true, yeah.
So it's like, and it it's like the end of Q two and the beginning of Q three is kind of. Probably summertime is probably where students stop using it, but. Other people are still using it. There are cyclical things, but it's like from year to year, those time periods are consistent.
Yeah, and I didn't um get as granular with this data going like Q one to Q two or month to month. Um, but I know that's something that we did, oh gosh, Jody, do you remember how long ago that was that we did the last time we did a report on space usage? Oh, yeah, twenty, yeah, twenty, late twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. Um, it was definitely before the pandemic. Um, but we did a report that, um, because I think someone on the board had requested to see that, um, what it looked like in terms of usage at a more granular level. To see if there were trends throughout the year. Um, and so if that, I mean, if that's something of interest to the board, that's, we could add that to a future one. Or plan to in January twenty twenty-four when we do um that.
Yeah, yeah, every forty twenty-three is the year to analyze for that, I think would be good.
Yeah.
I'm just curious if we're gonna use this data to understand the trends, like some of those little pieces are. Yeah, sure, but you're also talking to like the data nerd, so.
This also helps shape um right at budget time, so it's kind of even how they become, um, you know, like. Meaning, is that something that we want to work on expanding? Um, you know, we see people using the digital resources. So that this um conversation must have this for us to also help us.
I I was right asked about the online resources. Yeah. Is that because that clearly, you know, is something that.
Yeah.
Yeah, that isn't in person that kind of went up in the same way that that the in-person spent. So it's just curious, is that just people, is it, are there mapping things out about what they are?
Well, there's also the digital material, just like the eBooks and and the streaming stuff. And then there's the online resource, which is pure data pulls and databases, right?
And aren't those, yes, she says that it's not the. Certain things you actively can only access in libraries, in the online resources, okay, there are certain things, yeah. Not not everything, but there are some, yeah.
Probably up to, because we got rid of the, or we took away the paper newspapers, I'm thinking, maybe. I can't speak, y'all, I'm glad to. Um, I would love to be more granular, like I think this is so great to see, and this is not something we collect with library, but like. This is just me dreaming out loud. I think I'd be really neat to see like demographic recruitment, age group, like. I just think that's really like, who are the people utilizing these different services? Um, something that our district does with. Like their programming, they do ask questions around like age, generation stuff. I think it could be really nice, like. Especially with our anti-racism work, thinking about this aggravated data and the importance of that, like. It could be something that's worthy to look into, but I think that would take a lot of legwork, so I mean, I know that um a whole thing.
Keeping in keeping in mind that we have specific, you know, policies around data privacy for. Um, because we we are a a source of. Uh, you know, we have, you know, the Patriot Act, you know, early on was a was a big thing, and so we have a very. Uh, so I'm sure like there's ways we can.
It's tricky, because there's a touch of, you wouldn't want asking that information to become a barrier.
Never, but like, so like, so our country does it with everything and like it's always optional, um. So it's just a thought, yeah, I'm just speaking out loud, yeah.
You wanna speak on that?
Yeah, and yeah, you can jump in if I miss stuff too. Um, so yeah, that has been an ongoing conversation for what now? Like, I don't even know how many years, yeah, um about, especially, I think in particulars, once the library started the anti-racism work too. Is thinking about what does it look like to like really know who you're serving, right? And who you're not serving, even more importantly. Um, and so we've talked about different ways that we could go about collecting that and obviously always making it optional. That it's something completely voluntary that people can choose to engage with or not. Um, and one of the things uh that we just recently. It was in July that we launched it, that we were like, we're gonna pilot this. Asking uh optional demographic questions on the net promoter score survey, which is that kind of satisfaction survey that goes out. Um, every Monday to a sample of fifty percent, uh fifteen percent, not fifty percent, uh of um. Cardholders who have been active in the last two weeks. Um, and so far, I haven't looked at it this week, but I've been checking in on every week just to see how it's going, like how many folks are opting out of answering those questions? Because that's also something that you don't know until you start doing it. Are you gonna get enough data even where people are willing to respond? Are you gonna get a lot of prefer not to answers or a lot of blanks? Um, or if people are maybe going to put comments in open-ended fields where. Um, they are are naming that they didn't, you know, like being asked those questions. Um, but so far, people seem to be responding to them without without any issue. Um, and if they don't want to, they just select that for not to answer. So we have it there and then in our new cardholder survey, which is a brand new survey that launched also mid-July. Um, so, and just like, how soon after someone signs up does that go out, Jody, the new cardholder?
Within two weeks.
Yeah.
So these are all rolling campaigns, so your your numbers are small for a week, but over the course of a six-month, we can have enough. Of a sense of, are these questions that we can ask on libraries?
Yeah, and so we added those, um, that's a really short one, the um new cardholder one. On the NPS survey, we also added some questions about. How frequently folks use the library and what resources in particular they're using. Um, thinking that again, once we get enough data collected over a period of time, that then we could take a look at it and see, are there noticeable differences? When we look across demographics in terms of what kind of resources are being used, how often, or how people are rating the library. Um, to know where there are places for improvement. So those are the two places we've started it right now. Um, yeah, anything I missed, Josh?
No, I mean, it it was from the time that you said that, because we we should have looked to try to find it too. So it's a pilot, we'll see where it's going. Uh, we we've talked to our neighboring libraries, like Evanston, that started this too. Um, and so we have a good pal over there. Um, who has, we got some data on like, how did they do it? What what was their response? How did it go? So that helped us kind of. Form what we did or or we didn't do, or we can do a little bit better. So, um, you know, you gotta start somewhere. So if we see how this works, then we'll be having to report on that after. We collect some data. Right.
All right, thank you all.
Um, really quickly, one thing I forgot was the listening sessions. I won't, I won't make it, but. Oh, because we we kind of walked through it, we had our meeting, but I did wanna capture it for this meeting really quickly. Uh, just quick highlights, three of them, as a matter of fact. So just uh just to recap, uh we had listening sessions in May. Uh, April, May, and June, um older adults programs and spaces. Uh, we talked to about over two hundred fifty members of the community at each location at different times, near the weekend, in the evenings, in the daytime. And um, because I, you know, being new here, and I wanted to get a sense of like, well, not being new, but coming back after fifteen years. Um, and being a new director here, I wanted to talk to the community and I wanted to hear what they had to say. Um, about any number of things, and uh so the three that we have, maybe it were older adults. Um, programs and spaces. And so uh the three things I want to highlight from that conversation, I think people would be interested in. Um, and again, Christina gave me a good segue, just passing it to me, said something about the newspapers. So. Uh, we have, we had like about fifty fifty, um, that has been a hot um thing that people have asked about all of them. Um, so that is one of the questions we had, it was about how do you get your news? Um, so it was, it was interesting, the comments, some people didn't say they got print resources. But um a number of older adults did say they use digital resources, including our home. Um, but in thinking about services to older adults in general, um and then talking to the staff. We have concluded that we will be bringing back print newspapers in some capacity, not every single thing, not every print newspaper across the country. Uh, we have to balance, you know, there's budgetary concerns, there's costs, um, there's also actual use. But we think it's a good idea in the broader sense of serving older adults, because what I heard in this thing um to older adults is. It's something that they coalesce around. It's not necessarily maybe even what's in the paper, but they they like holding it, they like talking to each other about it. Um, those kind of things, and that's the thing that they feel that it brings them together. We're happy to do that, so. Uh, it'll improve the local additions, so you know, it runs to your, all your old leaves, your Chicago Tribune, your Chicago Sun-Times. Um, and then also New York Times. So we likely will have them at the, at the very least. We have some thoughts of putting it uh maybe at the branches, but it probably would be at the, but in any sense, uh in any case, in twenty twenty-four, we'll bring them back. Uh, into races that way, um, based on listening to what um community had to say and working with the staff. And I thank everyone for that conversation. Uh, the other thing is, um, in looking at spaces, um. Just looking at how people um use the library, one thing that really stood out is um our adult. Um, about how people said they use it, uh, not surprisingly, children's services was hot. Of course, meeting rooms, we just said, of course, was hot, but um people mostly come to May, then they go to May, and then they go to Dole. And then what, what we have both observed and from what people said, mostly what they're doing, they're shaking out holes or maybe getting things for their children. Because they're attending the park district classes. So it's it's an opportunity for us to look at the service on the north side in a different way. So just stay tuned for that, and we're, we have some things in the brain sermon um towards that end, because we realized maybe, I mean, Dole really does not work. As a mini May, it just, it just doesn't. And you know, if we have a third space, we want it to be active, we want it to be robust, and we want people to engage with it, so. Uh, we have some ideas around that. And then lastly, we talked about this last time, uh in terms of spaces, the 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 big thing was the parking that came up. And so last, I'll let you recall, uh, we have um worked with the village once again to um. Get spaces for our staff, so we have spaces downstairs for the parking, so we're working on that now for gathering days for that. Um, so not again, not to recap, it's all in there. I invite the public to check our website, the raw data will be there. Um, and the synopsis, you want to do it in there, but I just wanted to have those three for the purposes of this meeting. Um, so now I am done with the director's report, and does anyone have any questions?
Yeah, I have a, I I've been thinking about this since we talked about it, and I was thinking about the three, about about the three libraries, or even May's and and Dole. And I was just wondering. If you have thoughts about what leads to one kind, one of those libraries being used more than another. I mean, anecdotally, I live in, I I live very close to uh May's actually, and um anecdotally, I know. That a lot of my neighbors who um are, let's say, aging, they find it easier to get to. And I just, I don't know whether, I mean, obviously there are demographic shifts in different parts of the world, and I was just wondering if you have any thoughts. About how that might be informing usage?
Absolutely, I I we we talk about this amongst ourselves a lot of times too. I mean, I think that does come into play, both age and. Not only age, but like if you do, if you are family oriented, if I have to drive a stroller through an elevator in a park and all that versus. You know, I can run in, run out, um, if something is on one floor, so those are the kind of things we would, yeah. If if you, if you have a chance to report, I think we touched on this on Sunday, is in there too, for the purposes of the public in talking to the meeting. Some people said they liked the books better in May's, uh, they had a better selection of fiction. So I'll I'll do that comparison again, like this is the Costco, sometimes you want Costco, sometimes you wanna come to a big box. Um, and it's fun, you have that time to explore, but I do think it speaks to, um, I think the two biggest probably are like the under-five set and the moms and dads. And then the older adults in the community, and so it gives us an opportunity to explore, like how can we serve people a different way? And instead of just making a part of this, um, so we are willing to look at it, and this is gonna help us kind of shape that, so. Um, I'm just remember I said that tonight, there's more to come, stay tuned.
Okay.
Um. Because we have some ideas around that.
So, sorry, but I I guess I meant more, it's. Would you say that May's is a carbon copy or?
No, no.
This, so I'm just worried about the, is it May's, May's is the place to use it versus or better uses?
Well, May's is a little bigger and um. Dole is housed within the park districts, so May's is freestanding, um, you have more space, you have upstairs and downstairs. So I I feel like people use it a little better versus like Dole doesn't even have a side of the library outside. You know, you have to come in and see it, um, it's very small, it's two thousand square feet. Um, we also talked about, and we just not talked about. Just talked about, um, a feedback we got was the multicultural cultural collection being at Dole, so we are gonna bring that back here. To uh also reconsider the space, we think it'll live better here, we think it'll have more of a robust use here. So I I think those things come, like, were May's, and May's always says Dole, like, that is what's essential. Like, when you think of a ranch, that's what you wanted to do, it's doing what is, we wanted to do. Dole has been a struggle since, you know, like I said, hours points a week. Yeah, you know, she said, I have an article from the seventies, it says, what do we do about Dole? So I I I feel like there is room for service in the north side, I would never try to take away or go down to one, but we. You know, we we wanna be good stores of the taxpayers' dollar, so we just don't wanna keep doing things that people aren't using the service. Um, so this, having this conversation helps to inform it, so we're not just guessing what. No, they told us, we like, you know, I'm coming in, I grab a book, maybe, I pick up my holds, and that's about it, I don't come there to browse. Um, I have had staff tell me that, you know, the book could be right at Dole and people will borrow it from me and have delivered it at me. Because they're just, I don't, for forever, it can still be sitting there, and so we have to, I think there's room to do something about that. Um, so um from nineteen seventy to now, uh, two thousand twenty-three, I wanna try to, what am I gonna do about Dole? I think there is something we can do, um, and so like I said, there'll be more information for us to part of the road. Um, I'm. Excited to talk to you about some options about that, so we continue to have service on the north side, but when I say don't, that's only, that's the only place I'm talking about. If a carbon copy up here doesn't work, and essentially what I mean is that you have every subject there. You have everything that you have, but just smaller there, if this doesn't work.
Yeah.
We have such a lovely library here, it's kind of cool, maybe that's why people don't, you know, go there, um. You know, but it's working as a park district location, so that's exciting. It's, you know, so I don't think Dole has to go away. Um, necessarily, but it's it's activating that way. And so, um, that's good, but it doesn't translate into use for us still. And so that's an opportunity to play with, okay, how can we look at that service differently? You know, libraries on other locations uh across the country, sometimes they're making it a single kind of service lane. Do you focus on one? You know, group in the population, like how would be an early childhood experience? I'm not saying we're gonna do this. Just an example, give an example, everyone. Or maybe it's like an older adult space, or maybe it's a maker space or something like that, it's an opportunity, especially since we're so blessed to have. Relocations, we have, we have the privilege of being able to play with that, and no one loses anything, um, so stay tuned.
Can I ask you, the article from the seventies was saying, last week, she always tell you what?
Search, um, when talking about your pathway, and I think it was just because Dole has always been kind of a multi-use building. That that community members were perhaps thinking, like, there needed to be some more like culture of like what Dole was.
Okay, that's interesting, you know, that's my neighborhood, that's my community, it's a community of a number of us.
Yeah.
And I have always lived, always in my adult life, I have lived walking distance to a library, a library, usually that's. Outdoor space and walking distance to the library directly, so my first two requirements. And um, and I don't go there as much as I used to. And when we were there for the senior, uh, the older adults um feedback session, and people were talking about the. But there were books, it didn't, it did not have the warm, I wanna hang out here, library vibe.
Right.
So I think that's a huge, a huge change, um.
Absolutely.
But I also wonder about the advantage.
Absolutely, but I also wonder about the advantages of it being the most used, because I know that, you know, um. My nephew has after school, like that, or he went after school, because he's right across from the school, that's where he was picked up and that sort of thing. So I'm wondering, you know, and particularly in the later years of D ninety-seven. So that's like middle grade, you know, um so, yeah, there's, there's definitely possibilities there.
Absolutely. Yeah, that is a divide. Liberal code and library suicide of taking the life, or taking a branch away, I would never do that, but like, we, we do have to think of something else uh to make it. Be an active branch, the, the poor statistics, if you look at them, they, they're always the lowest, um. And so people have a feeling about it, but it's not translating to actually using it, so. I, one thing I can say is, the objective is not to take it away from the neighborhood, we want to keep it something walkable. We want to keep it in the neighborhood, and like I said, I think there is room to have, and it's important to have a north side, uh uh downtown and a south side branch, so. That remains, but like, um we just want to have opportunities, especially now that we're from the community. Um and we see the statistics and we've heard it, going along with it, like, it's an opportunity to do something different. So we have at least two things there, like um the newspapers, uh we, we were, and I will share this too, I said I wasn't going to go on now, but we were talking about it sometime. So one thing I had brought out was, um you know, maybe we could make it more senior focused there, and have it be like a senior lounge kind of day. I've, I've had opportunity to talk to a few seniors, um I've, I've presented at the um. At the temple on the river four side, it's an old park, uh it's called Stars. Please do not ask me what that, and that means, I know essence for seniors. Yeah, and it is, it is, it is the older adults in the community, I told them that, I said, I hate that, I don't like that idea, it's terrible. Um so I had to pick my face up and say thank you for the feedback, and so um. Not doing that over there, but, and also taking out the multicultural question, that's one thing, you were there with me too, that's something we heard over and over again. So those are two changes we can make right away, and in rethinking about what we're going to do over there, so we, we, we get the engagement, because like you said. It, it should have all the ingredients, it's walkable, um you know, you got a park mission, you think, you know, people would go right there, or you go up, um. You know, it's small, it's um, but it just, it has not translated. Hopefully, we might have enough uh opportunity also to think about ours too, that, that may be coming into play, you know, we're closed on. Fridays? One is Friday, one is Monday, we're closed on Mondays um there, so that, you know, that's an impact too, so. Um like I said, it's not going to go away, it's, we want to keep it in the neighborhood, but like, you need to use the opportunity, rethink what we can do there. So it is a fight, and like you said, you live there, you're like. Um so I'm excited about that.
I will say only to keep my marriage alive and to allow me to still go home tonight is that my family. Though we do not live near it, we're right around me, love doll because of the trains. Um and so, but it's unfortunate. Because I feel like the library portion is that way, the concern is, it's like when we go to the library portion, my kids don't feel comfortable. Because they're like, oh, this is the, I'd be in trouble, like, this is, this is what you mean by when I grew up, I haven't been quiet in the libraries. Um but yeah, I, I just need to get back to my family and not be kicked out of the house, so I do need to fix that.
Well, we don't, like Matt said, trades about us, so I don't think they're going to touch that, but. Give me your adult faces, like, well, not really, and I'm still posted it. So we feel that, we get that vibe, the, the stats say that vibe, but other people like, well. So again, as we all are good stewards of the taxpayer's dollar, we need to do so. People do act it, it doesn't change, we still have to pay rent to, to the park district, whether people come or not, so um we still have, you know, something, we still have costs. So we got to do that, we want to make it be something.
No, we have to be, like, combined with a cafe, because we have nothing, we just want to be part of the issues, there's nothing else to walk to. In our system, we have nothing.
Hold that thought, we never let you say.
I mean, I, I watch, I used to, and I, I know I don't read physical books as much, but like, I would walk to the libraries by doing anything that my holds. And it was just like my walk that I did, and you're right, I didn't hang out, I just picked up my holds and then.
And that's the same thing you said, so too, I, I pick up my holds, and that's.
But I, I think you have a lot of opportunity, because if that's what people are mostly using it for, and like, you would have playdates there, like the rental space is pretty nice, they have that cute little bus for kids. Um but then you can play with it, I mean, so creative, because if most people are just picking up holds, then that doesn't require very much data.
Correct.
That's very cool.
Okay, I'm going to remember, remember you said that. It's good, it's because you're, it's supporting kind of a bit playing with.
Yeah.
And so, like I said, just stay tuned, just while we, I think we're on the same page.
Train everywhere, just trains and libraries. Use the, the space there, the um, the reservable space, and there was a lot of H back.
So many, and then we, so that's the other thing, we don't control that, like we, so the park district has to come in. And they have to unlock, like, if the lights go out, they have the control, and so that's also not fun either. When, you know, we have a very, uh we have great, so these teams, and they know it, and we have a different approach to it than they do when we're in their house. So. All challenges, stay tuned.
Okay.
But at least the park district is keeping the elevator running.
Yes.
I like that you tried to say stay tuned, like, the last one.
All right, and that was too long for a second report, we got a bunch of stuff, so. We'll go on to additions and information report and status change. Um as well. That is on page sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen. Okay, and then there's some questions, we'll go into our financial reports. We have our financial summary.
Something about me, um I know this is swan, the, this uh quite a bit. Um and it's under digital services, and the way that I use swans is kind of. So why do you have to do this? I'm not sure. There's a service, but it's.
Services, and it needs to pay a membership fee, swan is a subscription, and so that's how it was, you know, come out financially, it was quite a category. That's a little lineup.
And also, I remember um going to the Swan, it did warn us, it was going to go up substantially. So I, I, and they have come to pass at this point, um just like when we get to the budget conversation. Uh I hear that from my IT side, all the digital scruples have started, um so I think Swan is just another incident as well, so.
Anything else with the uh financial reports?
I, I feel like I had a similar question last year, but can, can, I guess Billy or somebody explain. What the, again, the significance of the property tax, you know, it's moved to December, right, the, the, so. Are we going to be okay, Billy? He's not saying yes.
I mean, Linda and I looked at this, um and I want to say most likely, you know, I can't, I can't guarantee. But it all looks like, um I think the property tax um bills are going to be in the mail, I think it was November. And the due date being December first, and um if that holds true, just like it did last year. We should have a significant portion of our, of our um property tax revenue coming in before the end of the year. I'll add this in here, and, you know, as most, most homeowners in Oak Park, um of, and really anywhere. Have their property taxes taken, you know, account for in their escrow accounts, so um uh once the bill, um. It's the mortgage companies, they, they pay, they pay, and so we're in a fortunate position in Oak Park, where a lot of people pay their property taxes. So, um yeah, we anticipate most of it coming in by the end of the year. Um I can say that a lot more confidently than we could have said that last year at this time, so.
Thanks.
Yeah, and, and just a quick note about property tax revenue up at this point, and Linda, please, please listen to the words I'm saying and correct me if I'm, if I'm catching this incorrectly. Lynda, Lynda is our manager of accounting and finance, um who supports, supports this work, um. The, what you're seeing in the property tax revenue for operating as of July thirty-first. This actually includes some payments from previous tax year, previous um, previous tax years, so um. Uh some of the money that was due in. Um from twenty twenty-one taxes in twenty twenty-two, we actually received it in twenty twenty-three as being recorded as such, so. Um if we receive a significant portion, like we expect to, um in December. Will, will we be over one hundred percent, uh or close to be to a hundred percent? Yeah, closer to a hundred percent uh received, so um I don't want to get too far ahead of ourselves, it's just, it's just August, but um. Uh yeah, we're anticipating having that uh uh at, at or above a hundred percent received. Any other questions?
Thanks, thank you. You guys will stick close.
I was like, should I just sit here? Anything else from the reports? Then going into the disbursement journal, beginning on page thirty-two. Seventy-nine, are there any questions?
What was the early childhood collaboration? Where, where are your receipts? Sorry, I lost it, it was just, um, I think it was fifteen hundred, that early childhood collaboration, I was just curious what that was.
I know we pay into, like, being a collaboration member into the services, so that's our piece that we pay into.
Yeah, it's like a support, support piece, yeah.
We've all had some, you know, it's our.
Yeah, it's part of, this is an IGA, so an intergovernmental agreement exists, where we support them, that's our, that's our portion.
Any other questions? Is there a motion to approve?
So.
Move on, hurry, one second.
Second.
Maya, any other questions, comments, here, none of those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay, that sentence is approved. Uh additional reports, um.
We did not move it because uh D ninety-seven does not have their representative yet. I'm sorry, I didn't hear that, that is enhanced, seven, D ninety-seven does not have their, I don't think, representatives selected yet.
We don't have any, we're like, yeah, yeah, like, yeah, yeah, so.
Um Cogga that meets, since the last award reading, uh Planet Green.
Uh we did need uh late last week, and um I think that. As I said at our last board meeting, one of the important things that a library can do is to be an educational conduit. For the work of sustainability, what Planet Green is doing, um we are planning to put together one or two page sheet. Um advising people to make programs that are available for energy saving class for low and middle income people. And these keep on popping up in its primary state, and it's really hard to keep track of it, because. Um sometimes they, they will say, this particular district will get thirty-five hundred weeks. And it'll only be available sixty days, it's kind of like that, and so we're trying to put together a resource. And uh handout that I would hope to be distributed at the library.
Uh so then we will need a gun in September.
Then, before we kick off our budget discussion notes. Take a quick five minutes uh break for restrooms and leg stretches as needed.
It's a break before that.
I needed it. Yes, we're still recording.
Uh, yeah, that's what I was saying. Okay. You're a friend of the job. I think that shows like, I mean, I. Great mission. We want to share this time where it gets seen here. So I guess. Well. You're. I have a light. The super. No, I believe in my love. I like to be more actually. I know.
All right, specific. Thank you everyone for coming back. I wouldn't blame you for making a break for. So, uh, the what we have is our first draft of our twenty twenty four budget. And I will turn it over to Jocelyn Billy.
Okay, um, so Billy's gonna walk through it and we'll kind of, you know, kind of like salt pepper it. So we'll pass it back and forth, uh, because we're gonna tag team. You're right. No, I love that. Like, so I'm kind of like. So that's ability to kind of give us like, um, like the groundwork of how it all go down and like we'll jump it out. So.
Yes, yes. Before I jump in too far, I I used the wrong word earlier when I was talking about Linda. I said Linda's supporting the work. Linda and I are doing the work together. So I like, I don't want to give any like Linda, I need Linda, Linda needs me. We're we're working together and both doing this work. So, um, none of what you see in front of you is possible without without her work. So, um, thank you, Linda. So, um, jumping into, um, this discussion, um, actually, I think it's just what I'm saying. At first I want to kind of talk for maybe, I don't know, let's try to say ten to fifteen minutes about, you know, the process, the realities that we face and in the focus for today's discussion before we jump into questions and, um, discussing the full the full document in front of you. So, um, yeah, thinking about the process, um, you know, just kind of recap and what what, you know, this is August, you've seen the first draft of the budget. This is typical, we put in the draft in budget, um, for the board to react to in August. Um, we get some additional direction from this meeting. So we can go back and do additional work because we want to bring back draft two to you in September. So September will bring another draft to you and we'll further refine it based on that additional feedback. Um, and with, uh, uh, our goal is to have a budget approved at our October meeting. So at October, we want to bring you the final, final budget for your approval. And that's an important, uh, that's an important date because in October, it being approved in October gives us plenty of time to get it to the village to incorporate in in their budget, to incorporate our our ask into their budget. Um, so that's kind of the the process that we're looking at from the board level, um, from the staff side, from the staff side. Um, it wasn't just Linda and I who just put our heads together and came up with it, came with all these numbers. No, we started back in June with discussions with our leadership team and management team. Um, we also had an opportunity this year to to take a fresh look at our process. Um, and we had a goal of making a more inclusive and a more interactive process with our with our staff, specifically members of the leadership team and management team. We want to, we wanted to increase our understanding of all the different lines that are in our budget, uh, plus all all the numbers that make up those lines and also keeping things simple. You know, it's like we we do have to, um, look at all these different financial reports, but what do we really need to do and look at for a budget? So, um, we did go through that whole interactive process. Um, and because of all of that, we have a lot more accurate numbers to present to you in the draft, one of the budget. Um, typically in years past, the focus was always on revenue and people um, in the first draft of the budget and the rest was kind of all placeholders, like placeholder numbers. We've got a lot of good numbers in in the rest of this budget. So I I'm I'm pretty confident, um, these numbers are close. So that's that's been the process from the staff side. And I've been talking here for for a few minutes already, and I know, um, for board for board members, you're looking at, there's there's hundreds of lines or like a hundred lines of information on here. There's no one number you're focused in on, and it's that property tax, uh, for operating in in increasing our revenue at eight percent. Now, if you see it in the first line of the, uh, of the budget and eight percent ask. I I, um, you kind of recognize also the reality of 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 the situation, the reality of like one, doing all this work, looking at all the numbers. Um, there's a reason why we have the eight percent there, you know, one, it's something for you to react to. But two, it's also, if we're going to look at all, um, approving a budget with all these expenses, we're going to need, we're going to need, um, uh, the eight percent eight percent increase. But let me give you a little more, a little more reason as to like why or why we find ourselves in this reality. One, we're we're currently living in an in an inflationary environment, right? Like the cost of living is going, cost of goods is going up. Everything is becoming, um, more more expensive. Um, and in the previous two budgets, so the budget were for twenty twenty three and also twenty twenty two, those budgets were approved at an operating deficit. An operating deficit, um, uh, if you go to page three of the draft, like we, um, there's a net surplus deficit operating line is, it's a it's a number in red. You just go to page three, so you can see the number. Page sixty two of the, uh, on the board packet. Yeah, you're looking at the F Y twenty twenty three budget, the the current year. It was approved a, uh, over half a million dollar, five hundred and forty six thousand dollar deficit. And the previous year was approved like a four hundred and twenty thousand dollar deficit. Um, that's not in itself a bad thing, but it's not something that's, um, sustainable. You can't continue to do that year over year, continue to budget to lose, you know, a half or not. There's, um, uh, uh, spending more than what you're taking in. But, um, Jocelyn, her and I were talking about this before and like her hand immediately went up like, well, why would we do that? Why would we approve a budget at a at a at a deficit? Um, we, well, one, we, our expenses justified it, but two, we had a, um, a healthy fund balance or a healthy, um, cash reserve. Uh, there's many words you could use to talk about it, but we had, um, uh, a healthy fun fund reserve. Well, now we've kind of started going into that and and we have HVAC issues that are going to take us farther into that. Um, so we got to start turning the ship around. We got to start, we got to start not operating or not, um, approving budgets at such a large, um, deficit. So we can start being a little more sustainable with our, um, with our funds because we know there's going to be, um, capital expenses that come up that are gonna that are gonna require that those funds, we we shouldn't be dipping into it with operating. Um, so I just said a lot there. Um, Justin, you want to chime in on any of that?
Well, I'm open to this too. If capital, um, like, you know, like the chiller is coming up next month will be, um, and that's a part of the the chiller, if you remember.
Well, chiller, chiller one is this year. Chiller two is next year.
That's a hundred million dollars just for that. Um, you know, Ted, I think you heard like, what's going on with Swan? Man, that one up, that's additional. Those all those every across the board from Swan to all the our our digital resources. Um, I talked to Marjina about that all the time. He was like, just brace yourself because it's coming. Um, also, um, Ironmark, um, also the cost of benefits, that some of these things are things that are out of our hands. Um, not to mention us trying to just stay where we are as an excellent library, that some stuff we just can't help. And so, uh, we do, we are blessed enough to have a reserve, but as Billy said, we don't want to be tapping into that because we'd be seventy zero. Uh, and we don't want that. And again, um, we've talked about being good towards all evening. Um, I will drop in, I I told you I'm gonna keep putting in that for for director university. We had a thing about budgets. And they said, this is the year to ask, you know, because it's a ask. Don't don't be timid. Don't go in there talking about you want one or two percent because you'll never catch up. Um, you know, you'll never catch up again. Um, and we already are behind. It's, we've been able to kind of shield it because we have the, um, we have the reserve funds. But, um, uh, that's why it is what it is. So that's my little library, your answer though to support those.
Yeah. So there, so there are three key things we want to talk that I I think we need to talk about today. Um, and one is, yeah, property tax, uh, for for operating. It's the first line at eight percent increase. I think we need to talk a little bit more about that. Um, I I explained a little more the justification for why that needs to go up. Um, but we, I also want to look at, um, people. And when I say people, I mean, people are our library and, you know, people talk about, oh, your your employees are your biggest or your greatest asset. Like, no, no, they are our library, like they are our library. And so I think, um, and they are a significant portion, the the biggest portion of our of our, uh, expenses. Um, so when I talk about people, I will talk specifically about wages and salaries. Um, so if you're thinking about, so opera, property tax for operating revenue, that that's going up eight percent. We have that going up eight percent in this version. Compensation, uh, I'm sorry, wages and salaries is going up six point three percent. That's driving a lot of that, um, a lot of the cost. But you might say like, well, if wages and salaries are only going up or the people budget is only going up six point five percent, six point three percent, why do we need, um, uh, property tax revenue to go up eight percent? It's because of that, uh, operating at a deficit. We're trying to overcome that. We're trying to close the gap. Um, if I mentioned three numbers, so those are those are first two, the third. Um, and we've been talking about this a little bit with HVAC, but it's a building improvements line. It's under capital expenses on page three of the budget or page, sixty two of the of the board packet. And so it's a building improvements line. Right now we're slotted at six hundred and forty one thousand dollars, but I also know that that's that's a trimmed down version of what our capital, capital, uh, I'm sorry, building improvements would be. Um, I know that if we if we put more money there, we could spend more money there. So. Um, those are the three things I wanted to make sure we talk about today.
Speaking of that, um, you know, I just a reminder, this building is that year twenty. Um, and Maze is older and Dole is, we just talked about the division of Dole. So, um, that's something to think about when we think about the capital projects. And, uh, we have new facilities, uh, a really capable team in place. Um, and a lot of stuff prior to that, uh, has been deferred maintenance or not correctly maintained or not at all. And so, um, now that we have a really good team in place, um, we can, there's things that are coming up that need to be addressed. Um, and even if that weren't the case, just with the age of the buildings, um, we have been touring buildings, um, and thinking about our capital projects. And a lot of our benchmark libraries are are already there. They're already done to be fresh. And so we do want to keep up with that. Like we've been to, um, helpers who over the same year we have, and they continue to do, um, to do improvements a little by little. We've been discovering who has had almost a million dollar refresh too. Um, so it's, we're at that time too. So that's another critical juncture that we're at to think about when we're talking about all this stuff too. About the age of our buildings.
I'm sorry, can I ask about the capital, um, projects? Because I feel like in the past, we've seen, and I mean, have we not seen like, uh, 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 not as fresh exactly, but some kind of a table that showed, you know, like a few years prior and then a few years about and, you know, like.
What was, what those specific projects would be that we're looking at more next year?
I mean, this is. We did something like that. Do you know what I mean? To get something like, like we can, uh, if I remember correctly, so the conversation doesn't sound like a day. So we can put this off maybe this year, but look how long it's been and it's going to take, you know, and I was just remembering if some.
And we'll get more expensive the longer we put it on.
Right. So I'm just learning if that's that kind of visualization.
All it's all true. And go to page sixty six of the board package. Um, I've I've got a condensed version of what you just talked about there. I didn't improve, I didn't include the previous years.
Okay.
So sixty six of the board packet, I didn't include the previous years and, um, and what I also will say about that, like all of that, everything you described, it was all informed by, um, a capital asset study. Matt, am I correct in saying like, all informed by a capital asset study, um, which, when was the last one done? Twenty, twenty fifteen? Um, and and you know, we're, we need a new one. Um, and actually, there's, there's, um, money included in this, um, uh, capital improve, but the building improvements budget, uh, slotted for a new capital asset study to help us inform like what else needs to be done. Because right now, now it's just kind of putting aside chunks of money because you know something's going to be expensive in the future, but we need, um, experts to come in and and help us evaluate what the, um, five, ten years, you know.
And to back Bill, and to back that up. And maybe, Matt, if you go to that capital asset study recently, you can, you can correct me if I'm wrong. But my recollection of that document was related to the HVAC system, like the replacement that they were talking about, the estimated need in twenty thirty three was somewhere originally between three and three and a half million dollars. We're seeing six million dollars here now. And that's what is, you know, and that is, I mean, is that number some right to what the ca- the capital study said in twenty fifteen? Yeah, if you want to check.
Um, yeah, I'll skip this. I see my stuff so weird.
So that's kind of my backdoor way of thinking. I support the idea of, um, one, is it's eight years old. Right, because the age and scope of what we have done is it's like, when I saw that, we had six million dollars. I was like, I don't remember it being that big once we had the capital study years ago.
Sure. And I, and I imagine that, you know, nobody could have maybe projected this particular financial landscape or in, but can we get a like a bigger capital study?
That's the, well, it's also been eight years of, uh, economic shifting that no one could have predicted in twenty twenty. Yeah, yeah, that prepared for the cost was based off of projections made in twenty fourteen, twenty fifty. You know, that.
Yes.
Those projections are going to be wildly different. So, yeah, it's like, that's what I'm saying. It's like eight years ago, we expected it to be for me, the the first of the process was expected to be three, three and a half million in twenty thirty three, twenty thirty. Now we're looking at the current market, our team is project in six. But they just noticed the the second one on page sixty six, basic success, capital asset study, updated consultation for twenty twenty four.
Yeah.
So they, they're they're ahead of us in and talking about getting a new professional assessment and for presenting a report to us.
So ju- just to offer a comment on that really cheap six million dollar number, um, that original, Matt, you referring to, uh, dollar figure in the last capital asset study, um, was, I believe, to replace equipment like for like. I think some of this is adjusted for inflation. The other part is a ballpark, uh, to align with, um, the climate radio parks, uh,
Okay.
uh, initiative to go, um, net zero by twenty fifty, um, replacing gas fired boilers, uh, in in the future in twenty thirty three would not be an option to align with that. So now we're looking at more expensive systems, something, uh, V R F geothermal, uh, a different approach to heating and cooling altogether than what we have now. Um, so there would be the cost escalation because of that.
That also makes sense.
So, um, it, I I don't know if this would be too much, but is it possible to get some prior years as well, maybe for next month? So we can.
To see what has has been accomplished. Yeah.
Yeah.
For sure.
Thank you.
I actually, I actually cut that data off like for simplicity. Yeah, I was like.
Sometimes seeing what we've already accomplished helps frame that. It's like the, we're not just doing this, but it's part of a long term, consistent plan of intentional work that. Plan of intentional work that we've done.
And also, when we, I I think we have made decisions to put off, well, not we, but the leadership, you know, like. We made budget decisions that they had to make decisions we don't want to put off. And that's useful for us, I think, to to number two.
Yeah, and anything that we would have put put off, it would, it's it's still captured in in here, um either in twenty twenty-four or beyond. Um I think another thing to highlight where we're focusing on this list is, you know, the the um. The HVAC is all in red. Um oh, wait, not the, sorry, domestic water pumps is not HVAC, but um. You know, the chiller number two plus the uh HVAC, so. AHU's air handler unit.
Correct.
And EF is. Exhaust fan, yes, as I get, yeah, exhaust, exhaust man, upgraded minorization. Um. So I mean, that, I mean, you're looking at, what is that, three hundred and seventy-five dollar, three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars just for um those two items. Um which make up over half, half of our budgeting for capital improvements. Yeah, so we're we're trying to plan for eventual replacement of the system while we're also having to maintain it to keep to keep the building. Um. Yeah. Um yeah, as good as time as any, we're also looking at, no, go go ahead, Justin.
Okay. Um we also are looking to bring awareness, we should um use the. For approval to put aside capital reserve funds. Um and we can only do that with your approval and buyer's motion. So that's something we want to establish. So we, you know, when we have these, we have a little stash. So we don't have to go and operate it. We have to do something that's a hundred thousand dollars or whatever. But we keep building on that to have something we can take out of that and then to keep our budget stable. So um. We we have to, we have homework to do on our side that we're working on in terms of like how much that can be on our budget, how how much, because you can't. There there's a, there's a heavy need in rate. Um you can't stash all the, you can't hoard the money, but you are allowed to have a capital. Um reserve funds. And so that's something we want to do by the end of the year for you to consider uh.
Yeah, we we currently do not have a capital reserve, Matt, you guys.
I was gonna say, would this be akin to, I mean, naked for, you know, property acquisition, but I do believe the township had. A capital fund that allowed that facilitated their purchase on Oak Park Avenue. But I don't know if that was specific, if that if that was set up. Same way or something, but I know that they had been sending aside money for years for that intention. So I don't know if there was in that same note, but it's kind of.
Yes.
Okay.
And and could use it for that too. Like if there was a compensation of getting another location or something. If we had, let's just, let's let's stay positive. We have five million dollars in there and it costs three million, we can take it out of there and get it. But you could also use it for capital improvement. And you have these big ticket items that we're talking about. If we start building that, we keep having this conversation along the road. Uh for years from now, we're not taking it around the budget. It's like, oh, no, we'll never hit that. Still have some money left and still keep it. So we don't have, we can like to put a. Like clamp on the rising costs as much as we can if I'm being proactive. So that's something we want to bring to the table.
We, why is this important? Because we're not currently doing this. So like all of our money is essentially sitting in one fund and we're paying for our capital improvements out of this one fund. We'd like to carve out a special capital improvement fund. So that's that's like that we can maintain, maintain two separate accounts for that.
So you said you wanted, sorry, Stephen.
Yeah.
I I I'm sorry. You said that you wanted us to think about it and talk about it today, right?
Well, I'm just, I'm introducing that um in order for us to do this, it's a resolution. So we, we're doing our homework now to say, um, you know, here's what we, here's what we propose, we recommend of the resolution, whether that be. Like we say, two percent a year, five percent, whatever that is, or a dollar or not. Making sure that we're operating within the standard set of um the fiscal law or libraries of how much you can stash to decide. So we we don't have that yet. We're working on that, but I'm just giving you a preview. So I don't tell you on the first day and the same day. Um. I want to do this and can you approve it? So Charlie just had that communication, so you know it's coming, so you can consider it to be rolling over that. Uh with this conversation. And I thought it would be a good place to put it while we're talking about the budget and all these big ticket items you see. Uh instead of hitting our stash stash where we have the reserves and hitting our operation, trying to pay for five hundred thousand, three hundred thousand things. If we start making, because it's just, it's not gonna stop. The the next building's only hitting yours up. Next building's only seventy-five years up. But we're gonna get more other things. And so we establish this, it'll be just good for our future. So. Within this budget context, hopefully, I'd say either by the end of the year or by the end of the budget process is something we want to include in.
So I appreciate that early introduction. Would there be um? A difference in terms of how those funds are accessed? With or without or approval or or the.
Um I'm not sure. I'm not sure. I I just know, I do know the resolution part of like asking, can you do it? But once we access it, I will. And I don't know if you all know the answer yet.
I don't, this is a learning, we'll do this, I had that question, yeah.
There's a particular for resolution on the purchase of the second book, like, because that came.
But we were adjusting, I think we were adjusting a budget.
I know, I think this. Yes, it was like twenty thousand or thirty thousand, like a big flat that we took out of the.
Yeah, we also use uh the farm foundation funds to buy that. Um. Uh yeah, it, but that wasn't related to having a. Like a a capital piece put to the side. Okay, I can't, yeah, I just, I forgot why.
What makes it possible? So it's coming out of community foundation.
Yeah, that's why we have this resolution, because we have to ask and pass a resolution for us to access the funds. So um.
So I don't know that partially answers your question.
Well, it would be different.
I think we need some more information. If there's any places that we can do research that you know of.
Yeah, oh, excuse me, we'll we'll make sure. That's a great question. And um we're probably have the first ones doing on this road, yeah.
There's there's a step. We're going to have the first library to more qualified to pursue this. So I'm sure there's a. Plenty of resources for the staff to.
So, so is that reflected in the farm budget?
Not yet. God has, it has, it'll be a resolution. So this is just our first conversation about the draft. I just wanted to introduce it. So then it's not like, what is the document? What? I don't want to, I try, I'm trying my best. It doesn't always work, not to be confusing, but that's just something we're thinking about in terms of, in addition to talking about the budget. As we're talking about these big ticket things, we're like, ah, ooh, that, you know, like we we want to plan for that. And so the step to do that is to bring a resolution forward to ask you all, whatever we come up with, is it three percent, is it two percent per year? Or I don't know how many years. And we will find out like how do we access them? Does it become just part of the budget? Do we take it out? Do we want to take it out? Or do we then have to go back and say? We don't know, but like Matt said, it's a phone call. I know not every library has it, but there's enough. And we have good contacts that I can ask them, I can do that. I could put it on the list and say, how do you do it? Then we can get an answer to those issues.
The other, the other question about it is kind of the impact that it would have on taxes. Okay, you know, if we're gonna do a certain percentage each year, does that that automatically mean that we're kind of set up for approving that percentage?
Yeah.
That's right. Tax increase in addition to whatever else has to happen. I can mind concerns about that. As I've always said, our um. Our equity base, trying to make sure that we don't create a town that cannot stay. Or return to or whatever, um or become finally. Live into our our hopes. Of a divorced, equitable community if our taxes tax people out of the ability here.
Mm-hmm.
So um. Yeah.
It's all in there. And we are, isn't it, well, we're a small part of the tax, though, aren't we?
We are, we still have a.
We.
An impact on our responsibility.
So, um to, so a question that I would have about this. Potential resolution or the the um capital reserve fund is to try and, I mean. From my uh from my perspective, with my day job, uh you know, there there can be a sort of preciousness around like including diamonds. Do you know what I mean? Where where people get so excited about you, and you're not beginning to be endowed that you lose. I mean, I I I don't think anybody here is um on the word just trying to think like. The people who manage the hardware department or whatever, but uh in terms of what the. In terms of what our ideas would be around when we do or regularly, we take out the, you know, a certain one to save, right? And what goes, is it a discussion, is it a discussion every year? Is it an automatic discussion that we have to opt out of every year?
Depends on how we package it. I I can, uh how I understand it, it's something like we could, we could potentially say like. You know, the resolution is we'll set aside two percent for five years or two years or whatever. And so then we don't have to rehave the conversation. But I think just in terms of a broader conversation, it it is actually is the most possible. It's not too. Um it's just so we're prepared and we can use them better. And because otherwise, it's it's gonna come out one way or the other. So we'll have to raise it more if we keep having the difference to our operation, operating, um or we can put a little aside. Um so.
No, I it it can exist. I'm not a volunteer. See, I I guess I'm thinking about like another, uh, you know. Have been uh on another pandemic situation, right? Like where where our entire authorities might shift, right? So what I'm, what I'm wondering about is that is that the special things where we that is the year that we have a conversation about whether or not this money continues to come up? And go into this capital fund or do we use it to, let's say, protect, you know, um stock possessions, right? Or is the default that the board has to have a conversation every year, which I I firstly, I don't think that that's a bad idea either. So.
I think you can decide that. I think I think there's room for you all to, um, we can, in a resolution, there's an institute named to it. For what you all are comfortable with. And that's, I I do love that it has to be a resolution. So it's not for us to decide and just say, we're gonna put it aside. It's what you are comfortable with. And the other thing to remember is it can't be a huge amount. So we will never get into it. We're not allowed to do that.
Yeah.
Because we can't, we can't squirrel away the taxpayer's money in a huge extent and not be using it, but you are allowed to put a small amount. I I it's escaping me what the limit is, but there's a limit. Um it's not something we have to do. You can also say, you know, I don't know. I don't want to do that, but um I've been just thinking about it and learning more about it. I just, I feel like it's maybe something we want to consider. Like I said, we're at the, we're at year twenty here. I don't, I'm not sure how old Maze is, but it's not young. And here we, you know, we just talked about dolls. So we have, and you see the chunks right here. So it's it's, I feel like it's a good time to talk about it. So just consider it.
Yeah.
And it may be something we don't want to do.
No, I mean, I mean, I guess more. And we don't have a group order on a resolution that doesn't exist, but like, but you know, I.
And that's what's to bring, so we can talk about it and just get some feel and just kind of, you know, just.
And that's.
Correct. And putting aside additional percentage for this um capital reserve fund is not included in it.
Yeah.
Right, but I think that we can talk about how do we fund it in the first year versus future pre-years? Is it important just to get a setup so we can talk, start making contributions to it? Do we have funds that are in our operating uh on now that we could just move over to the to the, without actually um. Uh increasing to uh taxes more this year.
I like that question.
I, these are questions, right? These are things to look into. I didn't know we were gonna get so far down this this conversation.
But that's why it's gonna happen now, because if I try to have it and say, can you pass it to, it's too much. So it. Try to stack this in small pieces, because that it helps me to try to understand. And there's pieces I need to try to understand.
And I I know you said that portion to us and everything, that's that's fantastic. But I I would really love to hear your thoughts and the leadership team's. Thoughts and your recommendations, because you're obviously due with the numbers innovated around, so.
Well, just to preliminarily share, when I became aware that it's something to do with like the process of it, I just think. You know, as I'm looking at this, as we, as a leadership team, we're talking about this, as I'm talking to Matt, as I'm talking to Billy about like, okay. Um and and then thinking about operating in a deficit, all those things are coming into play in making this work considering. Um so that's my opinion. And that's what I wanted to bring it to you for to consider and to have part in this conversation. So. You said you want to pick that, that's the main. Um I think it's something worth considering, but it ended in being good store. So we have a stash for later. You know, think about our own pocketbooks. I wish I was better at just putting a little to the side and not just like, keep like spending it all out. Um and so this is an opportunity for us to do that. Um and I appreciate the feedback, yeah, because absolutely that would be impact, like what, how we think about the budget as a whole. Um realistically, it might be something, but like you said, we might be able to ship things and maybe even start a little nugget out, so we have it in capital. It may be an opportunity, and don't quote me on this, I don't know. So we also have a replay. Um I've talked to you a little bit about having a foundation, so we're working on that right now too. So in this talk, it goes back to revenue generating to how important that's gonna be too. So we can't just. You you said it, we can't keep squeezing the taxpayer out. So we have to look at ways we can generate funds. You know, a great friends group, it does not replace the friends group, but um as you recall, we've had two people give us gifts without us trying. So. I feel like we are loved um with these incidents of happiness week that has been shown. Um you know, like people do support us, they do, they're really happy with what we do. And at the very least, they're very interested in what we do. And so um there's an opportunity for us to generate revenue that way in a lot of different ways. But we need to, so I'm working on that right now to get that incorporated to get a foundation. So that might be an opportunity. Somebody gives a hundred thousand dollars. That's something we could perhaps put in the capital stash to the side. So it doesn't all have to just come from the taxpayer side. We gotta have it set up first.
Mm-hmm.
That's the.
And that would be another question, another exploration too, is. Our foundation and this, but there may be. Some good firewalls there. Um yeah, um and foundation. I love the idea of a foundation, another way to get income. I also know that. From my day job, that um raising funds uh. The taxing body has its challenges.
Which which is why we do not actually budget for that um income. And so we can't, we can't count it before we get it. Um we happen to get, we're very fortunate this year. We're projecting to receive about two hundred and eight, two hundred and nine thousand dollars in gifts um uh to to. Um to call it two requests, two.
Requests.
Requests. Um uh but that's not something we can count on receiving year over year, so we don't budget for it there. But um speaking about um generating more revenue like that, um our people budget even includes kind of starting to, starting to. Um build the development and fundraising um internally, but adding 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 positions, changing uh changing some roles. To build out that a little bit, so you start focusing more on gifts and grants.
Did did those major gifts go to the community foundation?
Nope, straight into our operating fund. So we don't have anything special set up for it, so they come in and it just, it mingles a lot of other cash and so.
We had some of those projects we had assigned to it, but like Billy said, it goes, even that, we were having this in there.
And that was because that's the way the difference.
Yeah, they're they weren't um. Uh what's.
They weren't for the found, it's like with a um one that was for like for education as one, there's a people collection development. It was just gifts, unrestricted gifts to library, which were wonderful. And then, like I said, I feel like we have on tax. And all the other entities have that. They know that too. The schools have a foundation, the partnership has a foundation. Because we all kind of realize like we, you know, we don't typically, we don't charge people for things, so we have to find a way to to um generate revenue too. Um.
Yeah, and over ninety percent of our incomes coming from property taxes. Like we have to diversify that because we can't keep going to the um property. Keep keep going to property tax uh payers and say, give give us more. And so um we have to diversify that.
And that's a great equity thing right there. So perhaps. You can make it so we don't have to, and so people can't stay. So um that's another state tune. The lawyers are working on what you have to do to. Have that final one, see reform foundation. Um I want to sign about that. You can, you can have one of those for people who are on that board. That raise a certain amount, that kind of thing, so we have a guarantee income. Um there's a lot of things we can do to um. Do stuff on that side. I've talked to the friends already, they're aware, they don't feel like, I mean, you know, I said, you definitely have a role. It's a different role, it's a different type of money, it's a different participation level. So I talked to Russell, he's excited. Um you know, there's, so we have some options. And like Billy said, I'm I'm glad you don't do that. Because I broke their places and they do put a imaginary number and say, oh, this is what we have. We're not doing, we don't know what. It's definitely something we have to consider in this, in this climate.
So, um I'm sorry, I have some questions today, but like about the, about the foundation or any gifts, I know, I know you said it to circle. And those are the particular ones that are un, were unrestricted gifts, and it's all the.
Um correct, unrestricted, yeah.
Um now, my understanding was that we don't want, we want to try with those to not be part of our operation. Right? Like we want maybe capital projects or something that can be won out. But like when we're talking about compensation, that's that's not the pool of money that we want to go at. Uh do I understand this correctly?
You, yeah, yes, you're correct. Like we're trying to think about it differently, but from an accounting perspective, it all goes in the, it's all, like all of the money goes into the same pot and we're pulling from it. All of our expenses pull from it just the same. And so like we try to think about it differently, maybe report on it differently, but um. I mean, in reality, that's what, that's what's happening is it's all mingled together. Um but yeah, we don't want to, do we, do we want to count on? I mean, in reality, that's what that's what's happening is it's all mingled together. Um but yeah, we don't wanna, do we, do we wanna count on gifts coming in to fund our operating?
Right.
Up to this point, I would say no, but I mean, as as we start building this out, like maybe, maybe there's something that can that can change, um if we can consistently start getting. Uh gifts and grants each year. I, this is, it's an unknown right now.
Well, here's an example of how we do that sometimes. Like, um I've worked at a lot of places. Um and I could say Chicago Public Business, like their programs are funded by their foundation. It is not something that we use a taxpayer's money for. And so that could be up a hundred thousand, two hundred, three hundred thousand, depending. Not that much on our side, but you know, you say you don't, we we didn't talk about looking at that, they're really looking at the programming. And again, we we do operate at a very high level and that costs money and it's, and it's, you know, to operate at a five star level. Yeah, we had this five star cost of that. And so that's one way we can alleviate the budget a little bit, and that's a one way a lot of libraries do. But you take that off, I've worked at a place that like that too, like we used to have swag at all at every location. Swag meeting, water bottles, T-shirts, and that funded everything, um all of our programming. So that was something we didn't have to think about. And that is very helpful. I mean, if you take out a hundred thousand dollars, I mean, that's a job, that's two jobs, that might be three jobs. And we can hire someone or turn somebody into full time in, so that that's one way that it it can have that positive impact on the operating side. Even though it comes out of one big pot. Will we use it to try to fund somebody's paycheck? No, but programming is a great way to use it.
And in in our programming is certainly a budget to be a hundred and sixteen thousand for next year. So I mean, that's, yeah.
See like a maybe, I don't know, like side drop projection of like what maybe a similar library foundation might raise. Just so that I think to, I I I'm of the mind, we could be more than five percent of the tech bill. But that aside, I will say like, I think to sell it to taxpayers, to be able to say like, maybe in the long term. This will actually save us money, like it would be a nice selling point.
Okay, thank you. What a similar library has done, like the what, yeah, what the foundation looks like in a similar library.
Absolutely. Um Jody and I had an opportunity to go to, I think I've mentioned that maybe in our last report or two. We went to the Harvard Library Fundraiser Conference and the whole thing was about that. So we got to meet a lot of libraries um who we could benchmark with. To give examples from, we still get the emails. Um Jody told me something really cool today, you know, um. Uh like Austin Public Library has a store, like right when you walk in, which I personally could not say out of, I got this from there, it was, you know, I love pink. Highly overpriced, but I was happy to buy it because I knew I was supporting the library. Um uh so that, you know, like that's no example, something we could do. And so, yes, um that could be something that we bring and then that's good news, like just to give you some samples, that'd be, that'd be a fun conversation to have with the possibilities. And the libraries are doing so, go get it.
I'm also thinking though, and in your inflation and and economy downturn, trying to start a foundation. Like the timing might be. Yes, and they're holding it more than ever right now.
But we do have, yes, but we do, we are a beloved institution, we're not a hard sell. And we do have people where these ups and downs, they're in the financial position where it doesn't really affect them. We we and we, you know, they've said this will be, I I read somewhere in the New York Times, like this is the highest time, like this is the most that um. People's money will turn over.
The baby boomer, baby, the baby boomer.
Trying not to say that, but yes. This is a great C C history. Yes, so um you know, it's, it's already happening, you know, we got to, like I said, without even trying. Um because people were thinking of us, one person left us their entire um retirement fund. And um and um our beloved Barbara Boucher thought of us in her um request as well that she did for us, so. I feel like there's more of that there. It might be people don't live here, it might be someone who grew up here and, you know, they're. You just waited it somewhere in the cave and they just were like, you know, I remember that, when I was gonna become Batman, they really helped me in my quest and I'm gonna leave it there. So we, but we don't know because we haven't tapped it. I feel like, you know, it's it's worth a try. If we get five dollars, it's five dollars more than we had without tapping our, but I think we, I think we could do well. Um so.
And you mentioned that there were um extra line that the people costs were developed and can you assume team, where is that?
So um where that would show up is in wages and salaries line, it's in the people section on page sixty of the board packet.
Thank you.
Uh first page of the of the budget, um about the middle or people section, wages and salaries. So when I talk about when I'm adding adding a development coordinator position, um you know, changing, changing some titles. Um you know, I have um overall, I have wages and salaries for for all staff going up about four point four percent. The additional, you know, two percent is coming from that additional position, some other conversions uh to support our our. Growing our, well, starting our, our seeding our our development team, seeding our development team. And um boosting our uh creative studio staff, because you know, we've got a lot of. Um just as we're talking about this line, like where does that extra two percent come from? Um it's that plus uh. Uh adding some additional staff hours in the creative studio, so it can be open more to the public, because we see demand for that uh increasing and we hear it. So anyway, that's that's where that's at. Um. Yeah, so I mean, the numbers I wanted to talk about today are revenue, um people and and capitals. So I think I've I've said, you know, a lot of what I wanted to say, so I also wanna make sure there are additional questions. Because what I'm looking for, what we're looking for out of this meeting is, you know, um are we on the right path? How much trimming, how much, you know, adding, what like what types of changes you wanna see? I wanna look for some more directions so we can bring you a a more refined version of this for next meeting.
So this um these graphs that are on page six, sorry, sixty three, I guess.
Yeah, start, starting on page sixty three of the packet, yeah.
Yeah, thank you. And so. What what happens in the.
So the market is continually moving away from you. Sometimes it's moving faster away from you and sometimes it's moving slower. This year, I know it's moving away at at least four point five percent in the library market. I'm a hundred and. A hundred plus libraries completed a salary survey. How much are you budgeting for your wages to go up over the next year? Four point five percent for libraries in Illinois, uh at least, and that's people I think being conservative. Um and uh.
And where are you budgeting for?
Well, I I've got, the way the numbers work does is an average of four point four percent increase. When I saw that number come up, I'm like, okay, I'm gonna stop my analysis there. Before I'm gonna do any any more work until I get, you know, some more guidance, like to some reaction from the board. Uh but yeah, I have wages going up four, four point four percent. Um another reason for that, just to kind of finish this thought. Is I know nationwide uh uh salaries, wages and salaries are going up at least four percent. And so four to four point five percent, so that's kind of where I was like, eh, four point four, it's close enough, you know, I mean, I can go farther. It's just that it's gonna um keep, um it's gonna raise the um. Yeah, we'll re- raise how much we need to to cover, yeah.
And and we do, and we do, and and of course, some of that is left here, the first quarter, the first quarter increases are going to be more.
Yeah.
As they actually should be, I think, you know, and then the second quarter is four point five and and so on and so forth. I just. What is the, what are the numbers again for that first quarter in terms of the actual income range?
Oh, so what, I mean, um I'll just walk you through it. So this is, it's not a specific income range, it's it's a matter of. It's like this, I mean, in that first quartile could be members of the leadership team. But it's re- it's related to where they are to their market, not necessarily this like low. Low salary range versus high salary to the top, it's where they're related to their market, right Billy? Well, ye- yeah, yes, but I'm gonna go one step farther and just look like, if you're looking on page sixty four.
Yeah.
On page sixty four, like who's going to get a six percent pay increase? It's the sixteen people that fall in the first quartile, there's sixteen people. Um those sixteen people are in. I mean, if you're looking again at um the grade, how the grades are distributed, eight of them are in grade three. Five of them are in grade four. Grade three is like our library specialist slash supervisor position. Grade four is our librarian level or librarian like positions, and three of them are in grade five, and grade five is like um. Uh like supervising librarian, um like a little bit higher level supervisor or responsibilities.
Right, I'm sorry. So I guess those those the uh, so there are some numbers that associated with the pay rate, correct? Some wage numbers that are associated with that pay range?
Some wage numbers are associated with uh what what's the salary range for? Oh, yeah, there's, yeah, there's numbers, what's the, what's the range? Um uh I mean, I I would only be guessing at what those, what those are right now. Um the. Uh but these are, but the grade three, four and five, they're probably all fall between uh forty and sixty five thousand is when the first quartile, depending where they're, where they're at. Um but as you go up in grade. As you go up in pay grades, you know, the minimum of the um pay range goes increases. But just for those people and where the position is and where the position is valued in the market, um they're falling. Um uh on the low end of our of our current pay ranges.
Yeah.
Yeah, for for their, for their grade. So it's, it's a complicated analysis. I try to give a summary of of.
I mean, I I just need one of all, you know, what, but I I I guess I was wondering if then, not right now, we don't have to, but I would. I firstly would like to see what those pay grade breakdowns are.
Okay.
Like for those, for those numbers, because I think it means.
The salary range for each paper.
Yes, I'm assuming that's.
Yeah, they just posted publicly on our our website um as well. I can, yeah, it's something I can include.
Yeah, that that, thank you, because then when you're talking about, you know, eight people in three getting that six percent. Then, you know, what are we, what salary range are you talking about? You you know what I mean?
Nice, I I hear what you're saying, but I also would would say that um the people who fall there in in those, in those uh that first quartile. Are also um let's say newer employees or employees with less experience in those positions, and so they're they're um. Uh you know, ramping up and they're getting, you know, you'd be pushed closer to the to the midpoint. Why do they need six percent? So they can get mixed space for people to come in behind them. We're gonna have new hires, we have additional promotions. So you want everything to kind of keep shifting forward. Um but that's, that's um. Yeah, I can include more information about that. Um but yeah, you, I think your first question was like, why, like, like, we're not, we're doing a great job with market equity pay increases. We're doing a great job. The history that we've been able to maintain, or history that we've been able to have here with these increases is unbelievable. And uh our staff, we're in a position we're in right right now because of that work. It's just that the market keeps moving away from us. And if we wanna, and our compensation philosophy is to match the market, we wanna match the market. We don't wanna be the highest paying, we're not gonna be the lowest paying. If you want to continue to do that year over year, you gotta match the market with what the market, how much the market's moving.
And we're divided one, you're gonna win two.
Lib- library market, library.
Well, sure, but is it all I reason the line?
All I reason, yeah, yes. I I really do focus in the Chicagoland area, but the the survey um does include all of Illinois.
Is there any way to for us to get a sense when you say we're doing a great job with pay equity increases to have? Some graphs or charts or something to show us kind of that, like.
Is there a question of, I'm just trying to figure out with the, like, why?
Just so that we can like get a sense of like, we are doing a good job and if we keep doing this, we'll continue doing a good job, just.
Yeah, I I would say your proof that we're doing a good job is our current distribution starting point. Like if you look at. Um page sixty three. Ideal distribution, and that's perfect world scenarios where we're all paying people and even they have perfect bell curve. Um our current distribution, this is, this is looking as good, usually we have some people even below range. Most people falling in the first quartile, we've got people close to, you know, in the second tile and close to that fifteenth percentile. Um what I'm saying is, in order to, in order to ke- keep moving towards that ideal distribution. In order to keep moving towards that i- ideal distribution, that's what we need the four point four percent, um average of four point four percent increases for this year. If we do that, if we do that, um moving down to page sixty five of the board packet. Uh if, these are a lot of assumptions, of course, but on January first, if we get the average of four point four percent pay increases. You're gonna, you're gonna see, um you know, what is that, a little over the half of the staff is gonna be above that that midpoint. Um and then fifty five, fifty six staff members below the below the midpoint. That's okay, it's okay to have staff members below the midpoint. I mean, it's it it just depends on what are the reasons why they're below the midpoint. Um and a lot of them are, um you know, gears in the position is really what we're, was driving most of that. Um. But then, here's your future distribution on January first. I'll be back here in in August of twenty twenty four talking about we need more, more pay increases, so we, because because the data at that point will show that we've, we've slid a little bit. Um because the market keeps moving ahead of you.
Well, and we're a part of the market.
Correct, yeah, we, yes, yes.
Our, our state.
Yeah.
And other people.
Move their state.
Move their state based off the movement we've made.
Right.
And and it's, it is in some ways a self perpetuating.
Right.
Where we're giving people.
Yes, but it's something better than.
Right, so you also say.
And we're in a, we're in a great position. We're also creating a more of a demanded market by moving. It's it's, I mean, we have, I mean, I'm not saying it's that we don't wanna give people, but also. Like, we are creating the movement in the market as well. We're not just chasing, we're creating it.
Yeah, okay.
And so it's. What is, what, there's also a downstream impact of Suzanne's earlier point about the tax burden on the community. We should, we wanna have, you know, staff well compensated for the work that they do. But there is also a downstream effect on the taxpayers that 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 they fall on, that they are going to. That all of us at this table are part of and will bear that burden.
Yes, absolutely. Well, I would like to create an environment where. Employees who work at the library can afford to live in the community, where they work, you know, it's all.
But as we raise that that salary, we go to the taxpayers and make it more expensive.
Exactly, and it's, yeah, it's it's a conundrum. I mean, we just have to keep looking at it carefully. Um but from what it looks like in my recollection, it's. We're starting off in a better place than they were three years ago.
Yeah, and even, and even better than last year. I mean, last year was a, and and also an inflationary environment, and we found ourselves needing to do some catch up. Um the, speaking to, you know, yes, we're a part of the data that that's being looked at for this library market. Um I mean, you know, we have, let's say, twenty library assistants. But when I look at the library assistant market data, it's it's library assistant market data for like hundreds of mar- of 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 people. I mean, yes, we're a part of it, but it's looking at those benchmarkable positions.
But as I was wondering, how many of them looked at the choices we made last year? To, like, so I mean, it's like, yes, we are data pointing that, but how many of those other data points are being influenced by the, by the changes we make? I'm not like, it's like, we are in some ways creating, you know, the trend we are trying to catch up to. You know, we are impacting it and pushing it via our methods. I'm not saying we we shouldn't do it, but I'm also saying we have to be cognizant of. The in, the the impacts of the, of this kind of decision go beyond just a part. It it does impact the broader marketplace of what other people do. We make a lot of decisions about paying, moving up to minimum wage ahead of the requirements. Because that's what the Chicago Public Library did, system did. That they made that choice for them, because that's what the city of Chicago did for the state required. That forced us and other suburban libraries to do it to stay competitive. Like, so we are making, we are moving it, our our post for what is fair compensation for our staff. But then we are then creating a market demand for other libraries to move as well for their staff. That is not necessarily beyond, that is maybe then be beyond what their budgets. Can accommodate and pushing it and keep looking at it next year, so we're saying, oh, now the market's moving, now we have to move again.
No, sure, but it's what's that, I mean, obviously, it's true to any of them, but it's only really true if we know the data, what percentage. Of all of Illinois library staff members are at of our public library, like how much we're actually pushing that needle. Depends, because we're looking at these categories by like the percentile distributions by the number of employees in any given in any given category. So I I see your point will be truthful, but like the extent to which we're part of this huge movement only determined is only determined by how what. Uh portion of the pie of all library employees are actually here. So I don't have that information in in front of me, so I I don't know that that's. Relevant necessarily to our conversation. But I I mean, I understand it. In general, we're not, as Billy's pointing out, we're not trying to be way ahead of the market. We're we're sitting squarely, sitting squarely in the middle and.
Uh I want to reinforce one of um something Matt said about uh you know, Chicago Public Libraries raising their um minimum wage, or Chicago raising its minimum wage and us following suit. If you look at um pay grade in the in the distributions, pay grade one. Uh pay grade one is where we would have um is where our library clerks are, and I mean, you can look at. Um page sixty four, pay grade one, you'll see the majority of our clerks are above the fiftieth percentile because of that work, right? And 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 that's why I'm I'm not, like, in previous years, we had carved out special percentage increases for, you know, different grades, depending on, you know, what we've thought need to move. And the market that isn't saying to move that anymore. I mean, like, like, just with a four point five pers- four point four percent average increase. Everyone in grade one will be above the midpoint um. Uh our future distribution. I just want to say because of that work in this position that we're in, I don't think additional additional separate work is needed for that.
And then has the great book, I mean, I think that was asked earlier, if you look here, this kind of provides exactly. Kind of what was asked, like you can see the pay grades, so it's not just everybody at the top got the most. Just like you said, the people in the grade one, there's zero people below rates, there's zero people in the first. Quartile, there's zero people the second quartile, so.
We also did that potentially last year.
Correct, yeah, there's, yeah, there was, yeah.
But what we asked back from you.
What I'm saying is I don't think that that additional work is needed this year. Um I think we're like, if if you're okay with it, yeah, four point four is going to is going to keep us there.
So this shows us where. The efforts have not impacted yet, and that's where you want to, you're suggesting with the 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 increases.
Um I actually have the same increased percentage per quartile for every grade is exact, I didn't carve it out by grade, it's it's the same.
Yeah.
But um but I what I'm saying is I'm okay with that because I feel like there are people who are still learning in their positions and grades like three, four and five. It's okay to have people below um the fiftieth percentile. You can't have all of your staff um paid at the top, top of the range um and so.
Oh, if it's not arranged.
Yeah.
Um. But it is in that particular three, four and five, is that because those are? Like, is there a reason that the the concentration is in that and and?
Yeah, well, three and four is going to contain a a majority of our employees, that's fifty fifty four employees um. The. Grade five was always like in a kind of like an expansion grade. We've actually been adding more more people into that grade five, promoting more people into it. We've created the supervising librarian level. These are new positions that are moving in there, so I'm not surprised to see people um below the midpoint in that in grade five.
So are we, are you know, going back to pages sixty two? And so, you know, sixty through sixty two in that in the draft in the budget in those line items. Um. What is the sense of folks is the staff on the right path? To keep developing numbers and collecting information. From, you know, as I think I sort of touched on over the weekend, there's going to be numbers that, you know, are going to, you know, be revised because insurance rates get, you know. But, you know, right now, you know, the the revenue section. And the people section are kind of the the big questions right now for what we have of the largest. You know, influence over at this point. You know, and of course throughout the the whole budget cycle, but right now, those are the numbers that are kind of, obviously, the people. You know, it contains about seventy five percent of our budget. Um compensation and and benefits um. So where are folks comfortable with the staff proceeding? Uh with the numbers they've given us so far and or do we do we need, does anyone feel like they need to tell them to? Change direction with the work they're doing?
The library will be closing in fifteen minutes.
No, we, so I just, I'm going to um go over, I was looking for Ben earlier to make notes, but the the things that we said we're hoping to see. Next month, so that will be the revised property tax ask percentage if we include the. If we were to pass the resolution, is that something would be?
Just say no, no.
But if they're, we are comfortable with them pursuing the idea of establishing that capital fund. Like, they don't even have enough detail on how that would look to say how this would impact our budget for next year. But they want to allow us to know that this is what they're thinking about, and if we are comfortable with them continuing to spend time researching and preparing. To present to us.
But not necessarily next month or maybe next month?
Right, kind of has a one day time put together.
Yeah, that that's not seem reasonable, so we can ask something to consider.
Right.
But are we on the right path? Do we need to?
I think more information next month. I'm not ready to pass that next month.
There'll be more, okay, okay, yeah. But like, we're just at the preliminary mark, like you have the big figures, it'd be totally like, what is going on, you know, or are you like, okay, I can see.
Wait, Suzanne, is your question specific to the capital fund?
Yeah.
Okay, so your question was about.
No, 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 I I see it as maybe something we do in October, since we passed the whole thing. And then that gives us another opportunity to talk about it, gives us time to research what it all entails to be able to answer the question, and it'll be.
Mention next month.
Absolutely, absolutely, yeah, and it'll be part of this budget too, so if within this eleven billion, it's of change. It will be in that, but we just need to know, like, is that okay? It's a it's an eight percent increase from before. And and like Billy and um also Matt and I have talked about the why. And we just, you know, we want to, we don't want to keep going. If you're like, we're not comfortable, so this is the time to say, are we good or?
I'm never comfortable with an eight percent increase in a town that we're trying to keep. Affordable for lower end. Income folks um including myself, um not lower, lower, but. Hanging on the northeast corner of Park. Um and having seen the impact of um. A number of people who came to somebody's. Um gathering and don't live in Oak Park anymore, and it was a number of, you know, academics and particularly academics of color who were like, we couldn't stay, we couldn't hang on. So I have concerns with increasing taxes to the point that, you know, as an equity issue. Um. I do.
And we're going to hear about it. We're going to hear about it.
Yeah.
I mean, just, I mean, it's going to get, I mean, it's going to get better. Yeah, I I just just prepare yourselves.
Yeah.
But I've been here, I've been here for smaller increases and been absolutely inundated with really visceral and hostile communications.
Yeah.
Yeah, for small for small increases than this, so.
That's less my concern, not the actual impact on the makeup of our community, um because I know that most of the. Hostile responses are, yeah, anyway, um. So I do have concerns and I don't know. What the answers are and what, you know, when we were looking at three percent during a pandemic, I had concerns because people I knew people were struggling. Um but when it came down to them, we were looking at the pay equity, and the only way, the only device that really that we had was to not pay equity. Which to me is not an answer, but I I don't know yet from where we are in this beginning of this process, if there are other places to. To be, to run more lean.
It's never, yeah, just.
Can I, can I?
I'll just say that. We've, it's what we did when we were in the like, the, you know, the early Obama recession, stuff like that. You know, remember, we were. All of our usage went up. All the financial pressure was to keep it members down, was keep finances down, but all, you know, the staff who was here then will remember. Like, people were in the building more than ever. People were looking were looking to us for resources more than ever. And that those were incredibly hard budget discussions and budget decisions. Because we all understood the financial pressures that people were facing, but we also knew that people were looking to us for services. And expertise and support from us. So I it is, we are one of those organizations where when financial time, public libraries, when public financial times are hard. People come to us more as much as ever, if not more.
Mm hmm.
And it is a very hard piece to start with that, so.
Um I wanted to add, and something I I thought I said everything I needed to say, but I wanted to make sure that the board heard this as well, that um what you're seeing in front of you, especially from the operating expenses side. Um is a trimmed down version. I mean, we we did it through a collaborative, interactive process. Um you know, we looked at, you know, people's budget requests. And we were looking at numbers much larger than what we're seeing here. We did go through and he said, like, we gotta trim it down, trim it down to like what, like, I need something reasonable I can put in front of the board, okay? Um because it where it was at the beginning, we're looking at ten or twelve percent pay uh ten or twelve percent increases um of property tax uh. Just to make it even make sense. Now, I can't do that. So this is a trimmed down version. We can continue to trim down, but when you talk about trimming beyond what we've done trimming already, you're talking about um, yeah, what are the services that we're going to 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 cut? Or what is this thing that we're not going to do next year? Um because when it comes down, it's people, a lot of the other, you know, facilities and um. Digital services, capital, like, these are all things that have to be done or have to be paid for. And so then I think you start looking at like, well, what are the people costs that we can start cutting?
Which is why I think it's really great you all like did bring up different, you know, diversifying the revenue streams because it's so important in this discussion. Um. Yeah, I don't know, I I guess from my perspective, I'm just. I just love. The tactile overall, like, I think there, I have opinions about what should be cut and elaborated that's one of them.
Yeah.
Um. So I I feel stuck, but comfortable with it, like, it's a it's a scary number, but I. I can tell you did a lot of work and also with the recognition that like times are really. Economics are really hard and like cost of living and cost of materials and cost of employment, like all of that is up, like it's not surprising to see it at nine percent. I win seventy five percent of this is salary and. Um so I I think it is a scary number and I am maybe uncomfortable with it, but I also am am. Comfortable with your explanation and justification with it. But. That's more than.
And then we're able to give you all opportunities to, because you are the, you're the representative of, you know, you realize that. So there's an opportunity there for us to give it to you when you when you when people give it to you. To say, you know, that that may not change their mind, but it's not that we're just trying to be a fat cat, just do any old thing, we just want a lot of money. And the city and the village took the cap off, so hopefully we're taking the cap off too, but they have to, you know, the village had to do it because they can't keep holding it for three percent. When the interest rate currently is seven point something percent, um and if we if we don't do something this year, like I said, we 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 got the message. From um the Illinois State Library at our training, it's time to ask. Because if you don't ask this year, you know, the money is different, you you can't pay the three percent game and try to, you'll never catch up. And so then you then, you know, you have a situation where you keep dipping or, you know, you have to make choices, you got to get rid of people, you have to get rid of services, something has to give.
Hmm.
Uh and next year maybe we don't have to go so high, we we try to get it so where we're supposed to be is where the after they. At a deficit in terms of trying to cover what we need to cover to keep us where we are.
Yeah, if spending into that deficit, you get into a point where that fund balance gets dicey and if the county. You know, um officers decided they can't get along, I'm getting property tax bills out again. You know, we could be in a position of getting jammed up in the fall in that. You know, there there are, you know, borrowing options, but they're not. They're not good. I mean, it's like, you never want to be in that position. I mean, they're available, but you never want to, you you never want to do it, but it's. You know, if we we could lobby less and spend more on funds, but. That just, you know, as as Billy pointed out and Janice looked at it out, we've been doing it, we've spent it down, but now we're getting to the point where we need to maintain that balance.
We've got to start turning it around. This is still approved, this would still be a deficit, but it's not, but it's not as big and start turning it around and that. Um you know, the fund balance is what we use to pay our capital projects, our capital improvements, which we know are amount, you know, and it's it's intense amount. So this is, that's, yeah, that's the reason for the eight eight percent ask um. Yeah, I didn't I didn't put that number in there lightly um.
I mean, this is any conversation.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, I I don't think you did, when you're asking the question, are you comfortable? Oh, yeah.
Sure, I'm comfortable. But it's the, you know, look, you know, with, I mean, yeah, I mean, the number, I don't think any of us are comfortable. I mean, but it's the reality in which we're operated, but are, do we have? Are we comforted with the explanation that staff has provided and giving them the direction that they can continue to work under this framework? Or do we feel like we have to tell them to figure out a way to to bring that number down?
To me, it's just making the case for the foundation, like, I think really showing how that will benefit us long term could be powerful and telling all of those.
Could benefit. It's really refreshing.
Yeah.
We're talking about.
Good reality check. I just think that, yeah, yeah, could benefit.
I would say, I in my my experience in the past, and I think the staff who's who have been here when we. When we did the maze project, when we did the maze work, and we were doing some of this stuff here will know. That some of the, you you know, some of the fundraising that was done. You know, when it was tied to, and Susan, I'm sure you your experience would probably care this out as well, when we when you have specific projects.
Program based, something, yeah.
Like, it not not nebulous help us out, it is, like, when we did the maze, it was. Fund, it was raising money through brick sales for the light fixtures.
You know, that the patio, like, it's awesome.
We did it here, it was for the art.
Community engagement.
You know, it was. And it was bricks for the art fund here, so it can be done. You know, when it's for specific programs, when it's for specific capital projects, you know, and especially as we're facing these things. You know, going forward, you know, may maybe there's somebody who wants to put their name on our new air handling unit.
Yeah, that air.
Shut this one, that's the thing that's.
Air, the air air brought to you by.
I mean, there's like a, you know, like a naming competition, that's good.
I think that there's a lot of opportunity there, I mean, it's a nice try, we we, one of the people that doesn't have a foundation, it is a tough time, but we, I mean. People do love us and the opportunity is there without even trying, you know, that is, but you know, the.
Be lost.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, all right, so. I just wanted to make, you know, make one, I've asked twice, this will be my third.
If there is anything that comes up that shows a true opportunity that's not going to harm staff. I'd love to see it. And I respect you all on. And I respect you all on the work you're doing and that you did already trim and that. I mean, the numbers and the budgets you all give us are so thorough. I I I I just do have that concern about making our time. People that we want to serve.
Yeah, well, I mean, yes, of course, we'll continue to look at ways that we can uh, reduce our expenses. And if we're able to reduce our expenses, we'll bring down that um, the ask, but at least if we can operate in this framework, we can kind of do more work on the fine tuning of these numbers.
But it's this is the time we get, we gotta get more information, we we the staff needs to be watching.
Yeah, we're gonna be doing work no matter what over the next month on this budget, it's just what kind of work are we gonna be doing and and. Um, so yeah, we'll we'll kind of go with this direction, obviously still look for ways to.
Is like two hundred and eighteen dollars okay? And you're like, well, I'm not really, that's a lot of money. I understand that that's what I pay for, you know what I mean? I am, I am believing that I have a lot, all these things willingly, I put them in my car. But it's still, and so that to me is, I think, is really what I'm saying is that. We understand that everything is in the car, you know, it's just the the bills.
Mayor Captain said, um, the framework, make sure you're proceeding.
Yes, the the bill is hot.
Yeah, I am, and just, and again, to your point, we have such a small percentage of the. But we are a percentage and the percentage we're responsible for, so.
I would say this, you know, when, you know, to not to say that in a way to diminish the impacts of our. Our decisions and make it easier to do these things. Looking at the bottom of page sixty-two, you'll see the cost of a library card. You know, it is with the idea that there are on average two point three five cards per household in Oak Park. So you know, that's and that and so that's a per household. You know, so like lets us, I mean, it is, we are gonna have an impact, we all know we have, you all see our tax bills. We all know what those line items are, but it's also. The value in the services and the programs and the staff and the expertise that we are providing. You know, when it's when you see it broken down, uh, you know, for per household situation, the. I think provide an incredible value to the community. But it is gonna be a conversation that the community is going to bring to us.
Well, I just wanna make sure the community that we're providing it to doesn't shift too dramatically. Because of the taxes and I understand again, it's, we don't have control of the larger percentage of the taxes. It's just the first, it's just the part that we have control over, I just don't want to be part of.
I just never want like the library to be the, the the one entity that is like, let's be definitely really conservative. Yeah, yeah, like there.
Cause it will be the, will be, you know, the four month. And they and they wow, you know, the other people are having the same conversation across. Or just just gonna happen, the village itself is gonna happen, the schools are gonna happen, and that's exactly right, you don't wanna be lagging behind. And if you don't ask for it, that's what we're gonna be.
Well, we also don't wanna be the ones who's who are trying so carefully not to impact. When we don't have as big of an impact as they do. We have a, yes.
This is a, and I will own it as someone who has been on the board, you know, made these decisions that have put us in this that deficit spending. I will own it as much as anybody, this is a decision that previous boards have put us in. And I have been part of those votes and I put myself in this position. Thanks, it's 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 the truth. Yeah, and. But it's, but it is, it is like, uh, um.
But you also can't predict how expensive like materials and things have gotten and it just. Yeah, it's just we are operating and be a family and we're doing a good job.
Do we know what the other, I asked this question last year, do I think, do we know? Uh, what, do we have a sense of what the other capital bodies, what percentages they're coming in at?
Uh, we're usually one of the first conversations. Yeah, I was gonna say, we're we're early in this, I think you're gonna hear a lot more, um. Yeah, starting at the end, end of this month and next month.
I will offer at that trading, so some people have preliminary budgets. And so the person who was teaching us about this, he put that budget up and said, um, you know what you did wrong, you should have asked for more. Cause you all made, I don't know how you did it, but it was like, you know, you didn't, you didn't ask for enough, you should have gone this way, cause you're gonna be this much at all. And so he pulled up two people's whole budgets and said that. And so, I mean, again, that was like the way to come up for me and like we all had that charge of, you know, what you know, library was saying. You know, we missed, we missed the opportunity, but we were told. And so hopefully that helped, it's the one thousand, it wasn't really, we're talking about people who have like a million dollar budget total for everything. But you know, he was, or or they might have had five hundred thousand, said you should ask for a million. You didn't ask for a million, um. And now you're gonna be in a deficit going forward, cause next year, again, next year, we're not gonna be able to ask for eight percent again, so. It it might, we can get back to more normal things, but like if you don't pull it up. Um, and that I think that's something we can keep communicating, that people not gonna like it, uh, but we're not the only one to have this conversation at all, um. What they're gonna say, we're really gonna be paid for, the other entities that I mentioned. Who we, I mean, they're gonna be like, that's all you want?
If they're gonna be, they're a tax cutter. You know, they're in a position where if, you know, that their, their costs are driving them. Is something that would be, you know, most popular, they're capped and they are. And they're looking at how they're gonna manage, so.
I also appreciate that we don't go the route of. Art district and, you know, pay to play.
Yeah, the the, yeah, there's not, I mean, there's no no fees and I mean, there's very little of that in here. Uh, if anything, it's like a room rental or something, you know, but yeah, and parking, but parking is parking revenue increases. The cost of maintaining the parking lot increases and so it just kind of really offsets each other.
Yeah, so I, you know, that feels good.
Yeah, I didn't get fifty percent from the village, like I just had the conversation with Jan and then she's got to hustle up the other fifty percent, so I agree, why we're not in that position? Cause that is hard, uh, and that and we have a different charge, we have a different mission value, where we try to bring that access, like you said. Um, and but we say it's free, but it isn't free, cause you know, the taxpayer supports it, but, uh, we also. Don't pass that on to our payers, so that is that. We talked about that earlier, it's a challenge, people want all the things, but all the things cost a lot of money and we wanna attract the quality people that we have. And that cost money is we have to be competitive, we have Chicago Public right next door. That was who, um, is one of the highest paying and we have to, you know, we have to keep with them too, so. It's just, you know, we talked about it, I, okay, so I feel like. We'll try to nip it away.
Yeah, there's, there's one thing I wanted to draw, I I. We can save for next time. It just wanna make a note about nat- natural gas, I just had, I make, I make a lot of natural gas, Matt's sitting right next to me, he knows what I'm gonna say. Um, natural gas, it's on the bottom of page sixty-one of the board packet. Uh, natural gas expense, you'll see that it's increasing one hundred and eight percent. I don't know if you haven't noticed that already, um, there's a, there, it's not just because cat, the cost of gas is going up, right? But not that much, what we've discovered is that, um, correct me if I'm wrong in saying this. That for twenty years, we've been operating the HVAC or the um, the HVAC system incorrectly. Um, and um, only running the boiler for half of the year, we were supposed to be running it for the full year and operating the, all the different fans and different things. Separate, so because we now have to operate it for twelve months out of the year rather than six months. That's where you're seeing this, that's six over sixty thousand dollar increase.
Yeah.
So I just wanna point that out and that's like a fixed, that's a fixed call, like that's not something we can trim, trim out, that is something that we have to budget for going forward.
And that's that if you don't run it. Then you have expenses.
Then you have other expenses that come that come up, um, which were.
Over wear on other parts of our environmental systems. Yeah, I just.
Yeah, it lead, it leads to uh, climate control issues, community issues. If you're not running the boilers during the cooling season. Uh, with the system we have, you're only supplying cold air. Unlike a home where you can turn off your air conditioning or zone out a section of the building, you have to supply heat. To the building at all times to locally reheat zones on demand. For twenty years, we have not been doing that, um, we've just been turning the boilers off and running the chillers and suffering. Climate control issues, um, because of that, this year was, uh, the first year we've run the boilers uh, over the summer. Through the spring and we're we're finding issues because of it, but, um. We have more stable conditions as a result.
Remember, this is the heat wave, I I remember interviewing you, I was sweating. You know, myself, my parts of my body off. And like, I've been pounding here and it's, it's the heat right now, it feels better here and that's. Thanks to, you know, like Matt's worked with his team and getting us to there and like running it all year, knowing that stuff, but then it costs more. But then it saves money in the long run, cause you're doing the right thing and not having to be there.
It's the way the system was designed to have and it's being run now, so there are some causes. Related to that, but the repair amendments costs get offset because it is not being improperly run. Correct.
Thank you, thank you.
All right.
Thank, thank you.
That's why.
Freedom of view did not change that much, this is related to, um. Broadcast films, video and audio visual materials, it's it's kind of an oldie but goodie. Um, what we do, uh, the one change we had was, um, Lori is now the Freedom of Information Officer. Uh, and Deputy Director, so that was an add to it, so we're following, um. You know, the the copy parts didn't change, nothing changed except for that. So I just, it's just a matter of reviewing, it's one of the things we review to see if we need today changes, we don't have a lot. And so we're just bringing it, so you know, the last time it was looked at was twenty nineteen.
I'm sorry, can you, I don't, I don't think I have a tracked version, you wanna tell me again?
Freedom to view, not for you, it's there.
No, so keep that, I I'm sorry, I don't know what changed.
All they changed is Lori is the freedom.
It's freedom to view and she's not listening, yeah, freedom to view.
Free, freedom of view is about access to our.
So nothing was changed on there. Yes, I reviewed it as a staff, it it remains the same, it just hasn't been looked at, thank you. And we thought for you, so the last time was like this twenty, twenty oh two, so we reviewed it. It's, it's still there, we still follow this, so we just need to, um, those averages, like ratifying again.
Reviewed within the context of. All this.
Yes, so I have a, I have a policy team made up of staff members and so we do this every month, we pick them and then they have the, um, there's three of them. Um, from different parts of the library, so they have like historical knowledge, they 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 work in these pieces where. And so they can tell me, oh, this needs to be changed or you know what that, so in reviewing it, nothing needed to be changed. It was one that we didn't look at last time, cause animals did it again and we mixed it up before you. But it just needs to be, you know, as part of our charge on the board side, we wanna just keep our policies updated. And this is one that hadn't been looked at since two thousand and two.
And I'm just asking, was that what David, within the context of of the the challenges and the freedom. Restrictions of.
And unfortunately, yes, and unfortunately, it's like the ones we did last time, we're like, well, it hasn't changed. It's, you still fight the same fights and so if if they do stand, we wanna provide a diversity of viewpoints. Protect the confidentiality, provide the greatest access, that has not changed, that is still our charge.
To contest vigorously by any lawful means, every approachment upon the public's freedom to view.
Right, so we wanna, the last time the board looked at it was twenty oh two, so this is an opportunity for you all to say, yes, we live in that and yes, we still wanna adopt that. Um, with these, so.
Is there a motion to, so, thank you Ted, is there a second? Saying by Maya, and we put in the discussion on freedom viewed, page sixty-seven. Here, none, those who favor say aye. Those opposed say nay, and the extension, it is approved.
Okay.
Now, good for you.
You have a hard copy because, but the one you see on the, on your screen is the change of anniversary of the officer. But we took it to our council to add these additions and you have it in red here, it came the same day after you already got the packet. And that's confusing, like, oh, sorry, just be on the back and all that. So, um, Matt, you said this, you know, let's make sure we add, you know, talk to our council, so this was talking to them. And this is what they have on, all, everything in red, this is what they asked us to add. So I don't know if there's a lot for us to say to it, like the council has total sort of direction we need to go and to make it the most updated of the state laws. But if you just wanna peruse it briefly, um.
I have a question, I'm sorry, I think I should know this already, but when you say for commercial FOIA requests, what is that for? So people will simply do a lot of information or use FOIA to gain information. Whether it's hiring data or other data and it is to make money off of that public information.
How how do we?
You have to ask, you have to ask and under the state law, FOIA, you are required to respond and respond honestly. Are you seeing this with your? Yes. Um, on page two, you note, uh, the general, the sixty days. It says, or you may seek judicial review of the denial. But previously, it's any patron, it's the requester. Going from third party to second party, I would change that.
I'm I'm not sure you are.
Uh, so like that sentence would be or, yeah.
Or the Requester may seek judicial review or the Patron may seek.
And I, and I have one.
Oh, Dan, I missed something on the first page.
Yes, but this is just, this is, this may just be a personal court, it means I will also defer to the attorney on this. I have in terms of policy, prefer not to name a specific person. As as their contact, like it would be like, you know, a deputy director or other designee of the executive director. As opposed to, instead of naming Lori specifically, that ideally the policy should live beyond a certain persons.
Should I email Lori directly? They just say, yeah, which which is talent.
So I would just, I would just, yeah, I would say like the, the FOIA Information Officer. Or the, or the and designee of the Executive Director.
Exactly.
That gives you the director the flexibility to name who that person is, it may be the director, the director, it may be whomever.
And we have a few, so don't say that one person.
Yeah, yeah.
For the officer and or designee.
Yeah, my bad, yeah. Give, give, yeah, the policy should encompass, but uh, the, sure, so that restricted. That's just my, and then again.
And I'm glad that your email address is FOIA.
And it has like four, four of us or five of us on there, so if that happens, but it's true, people still don't do it.
Right.
People send it to Matt, me. So yeah, it's not just one person, so yeah, why put the person there?
Um, got it. The second bullet point under the red line, it says. Excluding holidays, and this is referring to the request form, it says it is downloadable below. And I'm not sure where the that link ultimately is, so just make sure that in the policy you have like a place that it's downloadable or it's hyperlink. Does that make sense? I can also move over, just.
I can also move over, just. Invade your personal space.
That exists.
Yeah.
The below is.
Exactly.
Yeah.
My la- my last concern is the. The library's failure to respond to a written request within five working days after its receipt shall be considered a denial of the request. Is that really our policy? Is that we just ignore, like, I mean, cause. It, it just. For me personally, I feel like every request. Deserves a denial if it's going to be denied or an acknowledgement or. Some form.
Right, that is not our policy. We do respond. Like we just had one that was mentioned earlier that couldn't, it didn't exist, so we can't give it to you. So we do answer, so I agree, you know.
Yeah.
What's the recommend, just cross it out?
Yeah, I would like that.
Where? Okay, that's it.
Um. I guess my next question is when we're talking about the extension. We do even say. You know, including. The not limited to the following reasons, or these are examples of why we may. Cause I mean, there are very specific reasons, but a lot of times.
Sure, what's the recommended?
I, I would recommend, uh, maybe extended for five additional working days.
Including any of the following reasons.
Including, yeah. Including the not limited to.
The following reasons.
Yeah.
Or, yeah.
Yeah. And then just in terms of, uh, consistency, the bullet points on that section are all in lowercase, capitalize them.
I am too.
Yeah.
I, we're grateful that we have a lawyer. Who has experience in FOIA.
It's true, more than I want to admit.
That was it, I think, I'll go into it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do we want to see that those revisions in print or are we comfortable with staff making those revisions? Based and, and improving it with those revisions in mind?
We have a process by which my.
Will we add, everything you tell us to add, we always do. And then it's posted on, and then if you, if you see that we missed it, you, you welcome to tell us. That's a time that if you can bring it up at the next meeting, you can always email me and say, remember. I had said that name and then put it on.
I'm serious, you wrote all the notes, why not?
Um. Sure, I mean, I'm, I'm honestly finding the library staff, uh, making the changes, but if, if, if it is the, uh, the decision request of the board for me to review, we'll just.
I don't, I don't.
That's not.
Then, then I think that we ask the staff to prepare it for our approval for next month.
Yeah.
Because it's not appropriate for a house to, and then put that work. On a board member to then approve a policy. Or not.
Oh, no, no, I, I approve it and I'm just asking that she.
But then we're asking for her to say.
Okay, got you.
Yeah, sure, that, it's not me, so. We want to ask this, you just want to. Yeah.
Yeah, and there won't be misunderstanding. So if you do the edits that are reflected from today's meeting, then bring it to the next thing and then we'll.
Yes, please do that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So that could review for next month and with that, we have concluded our agenda and we are.